So this meeting of the School Board Nominating Commissioner of Anarondle County will now come to order. I'd like to welcome everyone this evening to the beginning of certainly calendar year 2015. So Happy New Year to those in attendance and those are viewing at home. I'm going to go through a number of administrative items related not only to this hearing but subsequent hearings of the commission, certainly process questions that I've been asked, all good ones, expectations, as well as the format that the commission is going to be following related to the applicants that have come before us. Before that, I do want to take a special note, thanks to our friends here at the Board of Education, as well as at Anarondle County Public Schools for certainly allowing us to use the facilities, but more importantly, helping us work through our commission process over the years, certainly since we've been established, but also helping us with what has been a great response and outpouring from the public wishing to fill the two current vacancies on the school board. Couple of administrative items just for those in attendance here this evening. So restrooms are going to be to your right if you are in the audience in front of me. Commissioners also to be to your left, the public restrooms over there, not this way please because we don't want any alarms going off. We will be having a couple of short and brief recesses, so no worries about that. The other is commissioner announcement, as you can see, and for those of you participating in this process for the first time, the commission has 11 commissioners, five of which are appointed by the governor and represent the legislative districts in the county. The remaining six commissioners whom you will hear from very briefly in a moment represent stakeholder groups that are part of the county's educational system, also its employees, Chamber of Commerce, the Community College amongst others. We are down one commissioner, and I will make this announcement, I think I made this announcement by fellow commissioners, but if I didn't, I apologize for the oversight, but Roy Payne, who has been representing Legislative District 32 very ably on the commission since its inception, resigned as of December 31st, 2014, for personal reasons. Roy is working through some things with his family and we wish him all the best. Commissioner Blake, who represents District 21, is also dealing with a family situation and he is not going to be in attendance this evening. And our remaining commissioner who will not be in attendance this evening is James Johnson or Jimmy Johnson, as he is more colloquially known, and he serves on the Board of Trustees of the Community College, which is also a stakeholder group. One other, we've been asked questions about participation, I'll get to that momentarily, but I did want to say that these hearings, as well as rebroadcasts of the hearings, will be available on AACPSTV, as well as live streaming on the internet. So for AACPSTV, it's Channel 96 and Channel 36 on Verizon, so Channel, excuse me, 96 for Comcast and Broadstripe, Channel 36 for Verizon, and those of you with the high-definition needs and/or desires, your channel is 996 on Comcast and 496 on Broadstripe. So we got that out of the way, and hopefully those of you viewing at home are looking upon us, hopefully with some empathy. No, I jest. But we are delighted actually as a commission, and speaking on behalf of the commission momentarily, for the response from the public related to their desire, and we have a number of candidates that we're looking forward to hearing from, to be appointed by the governor, and it will be appointments made by Governor-elect Hogan, not Governor O'Malley, to fill two current vacancies on the school board, representing an at-large district and District 33. Just to confirm, because we've received some inquiries about this as well, what this means of course is whomever ultimately gets appointed by the governor to fill these vacancies will be serving out the terms of former school board member Andrew Pruski, who had an at-large seat, and Emily Bradenberg, who held the District 33 seat. After those terms expire, whomever ultimately gets appointed will have the opportunity to come back before the commission, should he or she choose, to be reappointed to the school board to serve out what would otherwise be a five-year term, of course, subject to the retention votes. That's one of the things that people have to be made aware of. As part of the statute that created the commission, there's also a retention vote that all newly-appointed school board members have to stand for at the next general election after their appointment. So there is a small d democratic process and accountability there. The other now I want to turn to is process. At this point, while it did not make the initial press release that the School Board Nominating Commission released, we have added a fourth hearing that will occur in this room at 7:00 PM on January 28th. And I'll walk through this very briefly. The ensuing hearings including this evening, this Thursday, the 15th, as well as next week, January 27th, we are going to be having, thank you, we are going to be having, sorry, excuse me, folks, three sets of hearings where we hear from our candidates. I think as some reports are in the Capitol and other places, given the number of candidates, we decided to proceed in alphabetical order, probably easiest way to do it, and over the next couple of weeks, we'll be hearing from those applicants. And then on the 28th, this will be, assuming that we can remain on schedule, this will be a hearing dedicated to public testimony from, and this is an important administrative item that I'd like our candidates to be mindful of, we will have two sessions of public testimony on January 28th, the first being the designated witness testimony of candidates. Each candidate will have up to two designated witnesses that they will bring forward, that will have three-minute statements for their candidacy, presumably, and after the designated witness testimony, we will then move to taking public testimony from those in attendance here in the hearing room on January 28th, on a first-come, first-served basis, for up to two minutes, for or against a particular candidate. In the past, that's how we've done it. That said, the chair will have some leniency for some members of the public that may want to testify for two minutes, and not particularly on a particular candidate, but on some other item. So what we're going to do this evening, after a couple of administrative items with the commission, is we will move to our first set of candidates this evening. We have three panels, and the panels will all come up, we will do that by name, will come up, sit in front of the dais here. Each candidate will be recognized for five minutes for an opening statement. We will then turn to questions and answers from the commission. Now, given the number of candidates that we have, and that we have to move through not only this evening, but on ensuing evenings, we are going to have a round of questioning, and each commissioner will be recognized for five to seven minutes for their questions. It will be one round across the commission to the panel. So it's not going to be five, seven-minute questions to each candidate in front of us, rather, we are going to have this by time. Thus, I will urge my commissioners, as well as our candidates this evening, and I will repeat this on Thursday, I will repeat it the 27th as well, and those of you who are veterans of this process, what I'm about to say is not something new. So, economy of words is a good thing. And please answer the question propounded to you, and I will also ask our commissioners to make their questions precise and also to prioritize. But given the fact that we do have a lot of candidates, and time is of the essence, what we will do is, if there are candidates, and please pay heed to this, if you feel as though an answer that you gave, you would like to have that elaborated on, or if there was a question asked of another candidate that you did not have the opportunity to answer, we will entertain, and you can do this via email, to sbncacc@gmail.com. You can follow up with your answer, and we will accept that by writing, and we will distribute said answer to all of the commissioners for their consideration as we move forward in the process, and certainly by January 28th, as we get closer to our deliberation session and our voting. One other thing about the January 28th hearing, and about letters of support, recommendation, et cetera. The commission has been receiving via its email address, and I certainly will check with the board to see if there have been any written letters or statements dropped off heretofore. But we are open, the commission that is, open to receiving via email, or snail mail, regular mail, letters of recommendation or support for any of the candidates up and to noon on January 28th. Some candidates already have individuals expressing support, and that's great. We encourage it. So once again, you can send letters of recommendation or support via email to sbncacc@gmail.com, or certainly mail it to us here at 2644 Reva Road, Annapolis, Maryland, if you'd like to do it that way, up until noon, January 28th, and we'll make those statements of support, as well as what I alluded to earlier, any statements that the candidates may have to elaborate on a particular question that was propounded. Not taking questions at this time, sir. And all of that will be made part of the record. Finally, I will make the following announcements. We have had some candidates withdraw their candidacies, and the following candidates have withdrawn Celeste Bussar of Lothian, Jason Coller of Crownsville, and Janet Pogar of Glenbernie. Those are our withdrawn candidates at the moment. We do have commissioners, one of our candidates who is slated to testify this evening, Joseph Cardello of Annapolis, needed to reschedule his testimony of today due to a pending conflict. So he is going to be rescheduled for the January 27th hearing. So those administrative items. So we're going to now turn to, unless any commissioners have any questions on the chairman's announcements at this point, okay. So we're going to turn to the approval of our minutes of our last meeting, which was our voting sessions on May 27th of 2014, the council has distributed. I don't have any changes to the minutes, but I will accept a motion to accept. So move the second.
Second.
So second. Does anybody, any commissioners have any changes and mendations to the minutes? Okay, if not, by unanimous consent, they're so approved. So with that, we're going to, we had some procedural items that we were going to address, we're going to table those for some ensuing hearings, and the chairman will let the commissioners know that ahead of time. We're just going to turn now to our public testimony and get this show on the road. So as you are called, I will ask you to come to the table in front of the dais here, Tom So for the microphones, when you are on, you should press that, the push button, and when you see a green light, that means you are hot. I will ask, we'll probably just go down in order, and if you are not otherwise giving your statement, if you can just make sure that your microphone is off. I have a timer up here, it's one of my, one of my rules, I guess, as well, is keeping time, and we'll do this as best we can. So for our first panel, again, thank you and welcome, and thank you for your interest in serving on the board. So in order, we will start with Mr. Angeles, and you are recognized for five minutes.
May I stand or must I sit?
No, you can stand at the dais if you like. Okay, just got to make sure that the microphone's on.
Good evening, my name is Tom Angeles, and greetings to the School Board Nominating Commission and fellow candidates, members in the audience. It's an honor for me to be here to represent, and possibly either the 33rd District or the at-large school board seat in the future. Let me begin my presentation with an emphasis on the plethora of life experiences that I've had the good fortune to be involved with. I am 68 years young, and I emphasize that because I have been blessed with a wonderful life of many opportunities. Every day's a great day, yeah, some suck, but most of them are really great. And both my wife and I, to be adjourned main to this issue, have been blessed with two sons that attended Anarondle County Schools. While they were in elementary school, we were involved in the PTA and athletics and whatnot. While they were in central middle school, I was the president of the CAC. While they were in high school, we prepared them for their vocations in life. One is a Montgomery County police officer, the other is some type of businessman in mergers and acquisition, and owns all kinds of companies that I really don't understand, and he tells me he owns 15 assistant living facilities that interest me as I'm 68, and I start to think in advance of where he's going to put me. In any event, we, they both matriculated through college, and were very successful. I personally have a master of arts in education with an emphasis in teaching. I achieved that in my 50s. I have a bachelor of arts in government and an associate of arts in law enforcement that I achieved simultaneously by dual matriculating back in the 1960s. A reference to my professional career, I am recently retired as a public school teacher in Baltimore City. I taught in Anarondle County and in Baltimore City. And one of the aspects that I would like to emphasize is that I kept to view things as a teacher, as an administrator, which you'll see in a moment, and as a parent, and I think that's unique for me, and I appreciate the fact that I can offer that. Additionally, I am dual-certified in English and in social studies. I teach English in college here in the county. Sometime in the past, in the late 1990s, I was Director of Recreation and Parks for Anarondle County, had more than 100 employees and a $23 million budget. Of course, we were heavily involved with the school system. I also have been a businessman for over 20 years. My first profession was as a police officer in Washington DC, and later a sergeant. I was the first college graduate in the history of the department to work in the inner city. All other police officers that had attended college worked in administration, I went into the inner city. I was also one of the youngest sergeants that had ever been there. Prior to that, I had been a legislative aide in the United States Senate for an individual in the 1960s who was running for President of the United States. He didn't make it, but it was an interesting ride. I've been privileged to have numerous involvements and awards, and even having been nominated for White House Fellowship by a congressman. Now, that's, that's all about me, which I think it's important for you to know, but how do I use that in the position that I aspire to? If I am appointed to the District 33 position, certainly I would want that to be somewhat parochial, although to a great extent generic, and that parochial would be involving with such things as the Crofton High School, which should be and will be, and I've endorsed for over 25 years. If I'm appointed to the at-large seat, then I would be much more generic, much more general in that which I wish to proffer to the community. The things that I would emphasize are budget accountability and fiscal management. I have that in my background, I use it as a prudent approach in the implementation of it with schools, in the classroom, student achievement, academic evaluation. All too often, our success is at a lower level, and I don't want that. I want student upward mobility, maybe I'll have the opportunity later to tell you some unfortunate stories that have occurred in reference to that. And lastly, adequate school facilities, equitable allocation of resources, it has to be even across the board. All too often, the political process takes over, and that's unfortunate, and I've seen that happen. I have a desire to continue to serve, and as many years as I'm blessed to have, and I want to continue to do that with your assistance, that's going to happen. I certainly, I always say that in many instances, I've talked the talk, I now have the opportunity to walk the walk with your assistance, and I certainly would appreciate that opportunity. Thank you for your attention, thank you for your interest, and thank you for your forbearance.
Thank you.
Thank you. Did I make the five minutes?
Five, 20 seconds, I gave you 20 seconds.
I timed in five.
Okay, okay. Mr. Appel, am I pronouncing that correctly?
It is Appel, yes, thank you.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, ladies and gentlemen, as I said, my name is James Appel. I live just down the road in Reva Trace, so the commute to the Board of Education would be an easy one. I moved to Anarondle County in 1989, and it's just been an absolute wonderful experience ever since. I have a precocious teenage daughter who's a freshman at Annapolis High School, and she's loved her experience thus far. She's in the IB program, she's excelled so far in her early stages of her academic career, and that's why I'm here tonight. The Anarondle school system's great, I want to help make it better. I think I could bring fresh ideas to the board, as well as objectively review and help decide some existing situations. So what makes me qualified to sit on this board? Well, I've got a direct interest in the system. My daughter's my life, she's receiving the best education all along, and while she needs to continue to learn important life lessons, she will always be my highest priority. I've been elected twice to represent the citizens of District 30, so the people of Anarondle County have already shown faith in me and my ability to make some good decisions along the way. I've served our community in a variety of roles. I was president of our community association, Cape St. John, just down the road. I was the member and treasurer of a parent-faculty association at St. Andrews United Methodist Day School, and I've served as an advisor on several economic boards. My daughter did attend private school, St. Andrews, since preschool. Her mother and I decided to keep her there through eighth grade. She flourished and received a first-rate education, and has transitioned into Annapolis High School extremely well. So while at St. Andrews, we did choose a new headmaster the second year she attended the school, and I was an integral part of that process. I understand what it takes to perform those types of tasks. Granted, it's a much smaller scale, but if selected, I would be able to bring that experience to the board as well. I served on the Parent-Faculty Association for five of the eight years that she attended St. Andrews. So I appreciate the work that's needed to gather the information and help guide the process to thrive along the way. Professionally, I am the Chief Financial Officer for the Seafood Inspection Program. We are a program within the Department of Commerce, who is a self-funded, so we don't use taxpayer money, and we run our program as a break-even business. I determine and administer an eight-figure budget, audit internal controls, supervise a team of administrators, and oversee all aspects of our program. So when I first moved to Anarondle County, I was the coach at the U.S. Naval Academy. So I understand how to teach. I'm not a teacher, I'm not trying to claim I'm a teacher, but I understand how to communicate to both children and adults, and I understand how to get a point across. Years between coaching and then working for the largest employer in the United States, I've owned several small businesses, so I have a wide range of experience that I think I can bring to the board. So what would I do as a board member? It's a delicate balancing act between setting policies, managing budgets, listening to stakeholders, and really running a business. My financial experience would be invaluable. I can read and manage a budget, I can make objective decisions, and while emotions and passion can take over, I can remain objective. The education system is still a business and needs to be managed so it can remain both effective and efficient. I'll help set policy. We live in a dynamic world where our lives change constantly, we need to be able to acclimate to the environmental factors that are both within and outside our controls. State and federal mandates are pushed down constantly, we need to adapt to these changes. Not everyone fits into a box, we need to be able to monitor and adjust. I'll facilitate teamwork, whether it's running my small restaurant, leading a team of an audit at work, selecting a new headmaster, I can bring people together to achieve common goals. I'll look at every decision as just that, a new decision. I'm not here to push any special agendas, I'm here to make a great organization even better. So overall, I feel like I would make a great addition to the county school board, I've got the financial expertise to improve and refine the business, to ability, the ability to review, set and implement policy, and have personal connections to force me to succeed. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Boniface.
Good evening, Chairman Green, Commissioners, my name is Jonathan Boniface. First, I'd like to thank you all for the hard work you do throughout this nomination process. I'm here tonight seeking your nomination for appointment to the Board of Education because I believe I can help guide Anarondle County Public Schools into the future. As you all know, education is a vital part of Anarondle County. It is one of the engines that makes our local economy run. As the second-largest employer in our county, the school system pumps in a great deal of revenue. The school system also accounts for 51% of our county's budget expenditures. How that 51% is used is a huge responsibility, one that falls upon AACPSTV, and that is the subject to the approval of the Board of Education. That responsibility comes second to the primary focus of the Board of Education, ensuring all students get the best education we can possibly give them, ensuring that every child is given an equal opportunity to a great education regardless of their race, sex, socioeconomic background. We must provide them with the foundation necessary to succeed in today's world. We must prepare them for their futures and provide them options that will help lead them down whatever path they choose. As the Salisbury University Beacon Study Data recently showed us, our students are an investment in our county's future, an investment that pays off with huge dividends, not just for the students, but for our county as well. With two daughters in the elementary school here in Anarondle County Public Schools, I have a vested interest in the success of the school system. Since my daughters entered the school system, I have volunteered, and every year, I have ratcheted up my volunteer activities as my daughters grow older. Since 2010, I have been a member of the school's PTO. In 2013, I started the Crofton Meadows Elementary School Watch Dogs Program. In our first year, we added over 550 volunteer hours to the school by dads alone. It used to be that when you saw a dad at the school, it likely meant a student was in trouble. It's not that way anymore. We have dads at the school many days of the week volunteering almost eight hours each. We have dads at the school many days of the week volunteering almost eight hours each. We've shown the students that it is not just the moms that value their education, but the dads, too, that that is the most important part of the program, that we show the students that their education is important. In the fall of 2010, a mom at the school, a PTO member, and part of the redistricting committee inspired me to get more involved. I had asked her if she had heard of any talk of a Crofton High School. She said, "Someone needs to fight for it if it is ever going to happen," and she placed a lot of emphasis on the word "someone." So I joined a few other parents, and we started a movement that continues to this day. It is called Build Crofton High School. As a leader of this movement, I have spent many hours in front of the Board of Education. I've testified a dozen times, and I have met with many of the current and former board members. I've met with our current superintendent and many of the AACPS employees, always respectful and establishing good relationships along the way. My efforts to bring a high school to Crofton have taken me before the county council almost a dozen times, to the county executive twice before the Anarondle County delegation, and all the way to Speaker Bush's office at the State House. I have built strong relationships with many of these parties, bipartisan relationships that will be very useful if I am nominated by you and then appointed to the board. I have spent countless hours studying every piece of data I could pull out of the school system. From 2011 to 2014, I have reviewed every educational facility's master plan and seen the patterns in the numbers. I have studied the 2006 MGT of Americas Facility Study numerous times. I have closely examined the 2013 BRAC Impact Study. I've looked into and towards a successful charter school, Chesapeake Science Point, and seen how it works. I have gone over every line of the past few operating and capital budgets. I do my homework, and I always try to see the big picture. To understand a system, you must see how all the parts work together. Recently, I was asked by the Greater Crofton Chamber of Commerce to be chairman of their education committee. I was also asked by the county executive Schu to be part of his education transition committee, working alongside current and former board members and many other well-respected individuals. I am a team player that would bring diversity to the board. As the son, grandson, nephew, brother-in-law, and cousin to Naval Academy graduates, my family holds honor as one of our greatest virtues. Being the son of a 30-year Navy pilot, I know what military families go through. I attended eight different schools from kindergarten to 12th grade, moving out of state every two years. That experience would be very valuable as a board member, especially considering 10% of our students come from military families. I seek to bring my knowledge, experience, and commitment to this board and help lead it to be the best school system it can be. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Alsop.
Good evening, Chairman Green and Commissioners. I am interested in becoming a member of the Anarondle County Board of Education because my experience as an educator has taught me the important impact of quality educational experience can have upon the lives of children in Anarondle County. I believe we all would like to see children self-sufficient, eventually working in a meaningful profession, perhaps even opening their own business, making professional and personal contributions to the community and exercising leadership roles in our county. As a faculty member of Anarondle Community College, well, I should say former faculty member because I retired January 1, 2015, I know the importance of our children being prepared for the rigor of college and being ready for the careers of the future. I bring to the board my extensive leadership skills, a broad knowledge of the educational system, varied experience as an educator, and a positive attitude that will enable me to fully collaborate with other board members. I have knowledge of the responsibilities and roles of various school district departments and initiatives, academic achievement, special education, student services, the budget cycle, and discipline hearings process. I am a consensus builder. I believe the role of the board member is to set educational policies that promotes high standards for academic achievement and encourages physical accountability and critical oversight of the public school budget. The most important role of the board member is, when called, to hire the best candidate for superintendent of Anarondle County Public Schools. We need to work with the county executive and county council to make the tools and resources available for the school system to implement its mission, providing a world-class education for all the children who attend our public schools. Most importantly, a board member must be able to work well with others. I have attended board meetings and testified before the board. I am familiar, therefore, with board procedures and protocols. Adequate funding is always an issue. It is incumbent on the board to advocate for the real needs of all children, those in the most selected programs, those that need special education services, the youngest learners, students learning English as a second language, and those in need of supplemental learning experience to meet or exceed the measured standards. The superintendent's recommended operating budget of $1.1 billion has been presented to the public for comments. There is a request for 33 new teacher positions with additional support for educational learners and the expansion of magnet programs. I support this request. It is important that all students receive the same quality service. I believe concerted and deliberate strategies targeted at students who perform poorly on the assessment is required. We need to provide the tools and resources to boost reading comprehension and mathematics skills so that students can perform better in all content areas, will help close the achievement gap. It is critical that initiatives focused on reading and math be built into the strategic plan and budget. There is already evidence that students who are proficient and advanced in these skills have no problems with passing any assessments. In ensuring all students are adequately prepared for the newly administered assessment, those students who may not have adequate resources such as computer access, supplies and practice with applying skills at home, and parents who may not have the wherewithal to provide the kind of support required to make their children successful, will need increased community support, coupled with strong alliances with schools to assist in ensuring their success. I would utilize my network to encourage support of individuals and organizations that serve underrepresented student populations. There is a major issue before the board now, the redistricting for Annapolis area schools. Moving kids from the overcrowded Tala Heights Elementary School to nearby Georgetown East Elementary School and Eastport Elementary School should be done in 2015. There are four proposals before the board, and it is incumbent upon the board to make the best decision for our children following testimony from the public and review of the documents submitted for each proposal. Thank you for your time, and thank you for your attention.
Thank you. And thanks again to all of you for those statements and certainly your participation in the process. So we're going to turn to the commission for some questions. Before I do that, I did omit one item, administrative item from the chairman's announcements. It was brought to my attention that the candidates' applications, not all of them were, had the ability to be downloaded and viewed on the school board nominating commission's website. It's a technical issue that the chairman will take responsibility for in sending, I guess, high-technology zip file over to AACPS. They could not open it, so hopefully one all and all of you will testify that you want to give the school more funds for technology so that that cannot happen again, but I will take responsibility for that. And tomorrow, we hope to have all of the applications online so that the public can view them. So thank you for your indulgence. I am going to ask Commissioner Burden to start off the questioning. Sir?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Welcome to the candidates and certainly appreciate your commitment to our county and to the education of our young people. I have about three or four questions. Hopefully, we can get through them in the next five minutes. The first question that I have for each of the candidates, do you support the Common Core Initiative in Maryland Public Education? Whichever one of you would like to answer first, please go ahead.
Yes, I do support the Common Core Initiative because it will be implemented within our public school system.
I do support it. I think the math is a little off, but it's hard. I think right now, we're going through some learning difficulties. I think the teachers right now are learning how to teach it, but there are fantastic resources like LearnZillion where the teachers can go on, the parents can go on, and they can learn and see what the concepts of it are. And I think it's really kind of expanding how far we reach, not teaching everybody can't understand that one specific way to learn and to show them three different ways to learn that same thing. I think it's incorporating more of the students into that learning process, and I think you're losing less of them. But it is hard for parents. I, you know, go on LearnZillion all the time, trying to learn, "How are they trying to teach this?" I look at it, "What's an area model?" But I figured it out, and the kids are figuring it out. Sometimes my fourth-grade daughter will show me, "Well, Dad, this is how you do it." You didn't even know how to do it. But I think once the teachers get on board and fully are trained and fully understand it, they're going to be able to teach it a lot better than I think what it's going through now, you know, the learning difficulties. But I do support it.
I would agree. I also support the Common Core. I feel the state Board of Education has certainly given its backing, and each of the counties needs to do the same. There's certainly a learning curve and some processes that need to be reviewed, but I think we do need to get behind it fully.
As an individual that was asked to implement it, in actuality, as a teacher, I have some reservations. I support the concept. I support the basic implementation, but it was a real challenge to try and implement it in Baltimore City, and we were not successful. And hopefully, they will be successful, but I unequivocally will tell you that, in my opinion and in the opinion of everyone that was around me as an instructor, we were not successful.
Okay, my next question. What emphasis would you place on early childhood education in our public school curriculum?
I'll go first. Early childhood education, I think, is invaluable. And I know that there are concepts that we talk about, about pre-kindergarten and whatnot, and I think that those are all immensely valuable concepts because I always think back on the one book entitled, "Everything I Needed to Know About in Life I Learned as a Kindergartner." And I think that that's a marvelous statement. However, I have budgetary concerns, and I think we need to look at that when we look at furthering education and not take monies that are allocated for other purposes and use them for new programs without proper guidance.
I agree. Early emphasis is invaluable. It will help reduce the gap that we're seeing. We've got to start from the bottom up, broadening the base, ensuring that second graders are reading at second-grade levels is the core of where the education system needs to be going.
I worry about the, how early we're trying to teach these kids. I mean, if we're getting them out of diapers and then all of a sudden trying to put them into schools when they're trying to learn the basic, practicing what they see in play and throwing them into schools too early, I worry a bit about that. I think preschool is fantastic for age four and kindergarten at age five, and I do agree with full-day kindergarten. And I think that's, you know, where you start putting the real emphasis on learning the basic structures. But I wouldn't go too far, you know, under four years old to teach kids.
I think preschool and early childhood is one of the key for learning for our children. We need to start early with our kids to give them all a fair playing field, whereas providing that education for young children early on is extremely important and which will make them more successful as they move through the system.
Okay, and the next question, does the business community have an investment in public education and a role to play in the education of our young people? And if so, how would you see the business community engaging in that role and the investment that they should make?
I definitely believe the business community has a responsibility. The students we are teaching are going to become our next businessmen. They're going to become the customers for these businesses. In my role as the chair of the Education Committee for the Chamber of Commerce in Crofton, I'm trying to bridge that gap between businesses and the schools and bring businesses in, show them how they can help out, show them the needs of the schools and where businesses can, you know, recruit customers, not only that, but also employees. Kids after school, they need after-school jobs, and they turn to our local businesses. I think it's very important that businesses play a role, and they can definitely help out in these budget times financially, too, with different things, sponsoring playgrounds, things like that.
Business is really important when it comes to the public schools, business community, that is, because the business community provide assistance to the students within the public school system. They also, I can see them serving a role as mentors for the students. I can also see the business community providing internships for the senior, for the high school students. Having the business community to be actively involved and developing a partnership with Anarondle County Public Schools is extremely important.
I agree. We need to enlist the local businesses to help educate the children of the county. It's in their best interest as well as the interest of the rest of the citizens. The more we can build up the base of our education system, the more people are going to want to move to Anarondle County. The more people that come into Anarondle County, the more revenue that will get pumped into both the system and the small businesses. It'll be a win-win for everybody, but the businesses need to show that level of investment as well.
To get the business involved in the school system is absolutely mandatory. When I was in Baltimore City as a teacher, that is one of the good things that they did. They reached out into the community of the schools I was at and had the businesses involved. As Director of Recreation and Parks, I leaned on the businesses because there's a very simple statement to be made, the businesses are where the money is, and the money needs to come into the school system. Businesses are very, very willing, as you well know, to become involved where they feel as though it can be of benefit to them as well as the constituency that they would be serving. In this instance, it would be the school system. I think it's a great idea.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks. And thank you, Commissioner, and for your answers. That was a little over eight minutes, okay? So that round, so we can see that we'll start to come down. I know we will. But just in terms of conciseness, and remember, as I said in the opening, if there is a question that you feel like you'd like to have to elaborate on, please write it down or remember it, but we'd certainly be happy to have a statement from you after the hearing that you can send to us. So with that, I'll turn to Commissioner Peters.
Again, thank you for applying and for putting yourself forward as a good citizen. My question, in your responses in the application, all of you, I think, defined what you saw as the role of the board, and I think most of you use that word, governing. What I'd like for you to do is to describe exactly what it is that you would do in your governance role specifically in working with board members, in working with the superintendent, and in relating to the community. And we can start with Ms. Andrew.
Me? Okay. I was, as you said that, I cheated a little bit to see what I said. And I say basically that the primary function is to provide guidance to the school superintendent and the school system, so as to provide a positive educational experience, and that's what I mean.
But tell me exactly, how do you do that in terms of, exactly, what's the behavior? In terms of exactly, what's the behavior that you would be doing in order to do that?
On the board?
Yes.
Well, you would listen to the needs of the community. That's the entire community, the school system, the administration, the teachers, and the population of students and parents, excuse me, students and parents, and evaluate how their needs can interface into a positive educational system. I mean, I'm trying to be terse.
I think one of the first roles of the board is to manage the budget, review the budget as it comes in, look at the needs of the facilities, look at the program needs, and then objectively evaluate all the programs that are presented, prioritize, and then implement that budget. And that's going to come from discussions amongst the board and listening to public opinion and enlisting outside programs to help evaluate the different needs of the board. I think, I feel second, they need to set policy. They need to look at the mission of the system and coordinate with the superintendent to be able to enforce the policies that have been set forward to make sure that the mission of the board is reached.
I think as a board member, you kind of have all 3 roles of government. I mean, as far as, you know, executive, legislative, and quasi-judicial. I think I would work with the other members of the board and with the superintendent, and I mean, I'm a people person. I like to listen. I think you learn far more from listening to people than from talking, and I'd like to listen to what they have to say, be very inclusive to bring everybody in, hear everybody's opinion, the county councilman, the county executive, the superintendent, of course, and our delegates at the State House. I would reach out to them, find out, you know, how we can get things done. And by bringing everybody together, we can work through budget issues, you know, just about any issue, and figure things out. But I think you have to be inclusive. You have to bring everybody together and build a consensus.
When there are issues that are brought to the board, that the, as board members, we would then listen, as a board member, I would listen to those issues because a decision can't be made by one board member alone. So we would listen to whatever the issue is presented. There may be policies and procedures already in place, so of course, we would have to follow those policies and those procedures that have already been set. And then do the research on the data, whatever data that's related to that particular issue, research that data, that if there's public testimony that goes along, whatever the issue may be brought before the board in order for us to govern, then we would listen to those issues together. Then as a collaborative group, we would come together and then discuss whatever that particular issue that may have been brought together and come to a consensus. We all would have to listen to one another and then listen to factual information and then come up with the best decision and make that decision as a board, not as an individual.
Very good. Commissioner Farrar.
I know we value the fact that you have applied for this position and your willingness to do this. So, we talk about consensus. How do you build consensus? And give us an example of how you were able to do this.
I think, I mean, the number 1 thing, you listen to others, you get your point across. You build, you get everybody seeing that, I guess the first thing is you do your homework. You know what the situation is, and then you make sure everybody else knows what the situation is. You talk it out, you come, you make compromises, back and forth, discuss it, and then build that consensus. How I've done that, I've been fighting for a Crofton High School. I've basically gone to every politician that was either running for office or is in office and told them, "Here, this is the data. This is the needs." I've gone to the Board of Education, the county council, and I have many of the county councilmen that I've, we've built a consensus that, hey, this needs to be done, with the county executive as well, the State House with, you know, Speaker Bush. I've sat in his office and, you know, come to the same conclusion. We need a Crofton High School. And I think that is the prime example of a way I've kind of built consensus, include the community in that of Crofton. I think people realize, you know, that's what's needed by doing the homework.
I think information is key. You need to be able to provide all the information, both sides of an issue, to the group. You can't just present something one-sided and come off as, oh, it's going to be my way or the highway. You need to be able to show the pros and cons of every situation, and then from there, listen to what the other board members have to say or the constituents and figure out what's going to work best for everybody. You're not going to be able to please everyone all the time, but you can do the best you In hiring the new headmaster at St. Andrews, there were a lot of opinions from a whole lot of people, and all the parents were extremely emotional about what was going on. And we needed to evaluate the candidates who had applied and weigh the pros and cons and all the factors that each different candidate was going to bring to the table, and again, come to a consensus. And at the end of the day, we were able to select a single candidate who was unanimously confirmed.
When I was Director of Recreation and Parks for the county, first thing I did was meet with every single legislator that would meet with me, and they were all of them, every influential person in the community, including Dr. Parham, and tried to get a sense of what they were desirous of from me, because I soon found that I was in a no-win position. When you're dealing with parents' children, as you do obviously in the school system, it isn't a lot different than dealing with recreation and parks because they have very strong feelings about what you're going to do. So every time I walked into a meeting, I knew that I was not going to be in a position to make everyone happy. And so consequently, I had to strive very hard, and I was very successful in making sure that everyone got something out of that meeting, and that's where the consensus came from. It came from people working together, although at times, you do have to have a strong leader, as I was, to make sure that the goal was achieved so that everyone was somewhat satisfied, at least when they left the room.
When I think about, well, one of the situations that, a kind of basic one example I'll give, is we were going to have an event, and we wanted to, it was my idea, my thinking, to have it in North County. And the members of the organization had other ideas of where to hold this particular workshop that we were going to have this event. So what we did is we listened to everyone present, their specific ideas, their rationale for what, where they wanted to hold it, the advantages and the disadvantages. And once it was all laid out, then we all began to look at what would be the best. So not necessarily what I thought was going to be the best. So I began to, when I listened to what other people presented and other people listened to what I was presenting as a solution and what the advantages and disadvantages were, we began to look at, okay, what's the best? And we began to look at and then make decisions on, as we eliminated, and came to a decision as to where was the best place to hold this particular workshop.
As a board member, parents will present concerns about their child's school, teacher, principal, snow days. What is the, your process and your response to dealing with this challenge?
Well, first, I want to hear which, if they, let's talk about the snow days. If a parent presents to me, "I have a really major concern about snow days and my kid, my children are going to school and, and when school is scheduled and what time school is scheduled." So what I would say to the parents, "I can understand your concern, and what you have to say is extremely important to me. My primary concern is for the safety of your child and every child in Anaronda County and the safety of those children going to school." And what we will, what I will do is take back to the board your concerns and discuss with the board. This is not an independent decision that I can make alone, but if there are going to be changes that need to occur, then it has to come through the board.
You need to listen. You need to hear what the parent has to say. You need to understand their concerns, and then you need to also be able to explain the process in which that they can make a difference as well as just coming to you. So if it's coming to give public testimony to the board, if it's bringing information back to the board, you need to help facilitate the process to improve the situation so that parent feels that they've actually been able to make a difference.
I definitely think listening is the key. As somebody that's come before the board many, many times, I've listened to a lot of other groups come about, you know, school start times, you know, snow days, all sorts of things. But you also have to be able to say, "Hey, we're a board. We have to make some tough decisions." And you have to stand by some of those tough decisions. Sometimes they're going to be the right call, sometimes they're not. Weather is a hard thing to predict, and to be able to hold somebody accountable for snow line moved 30 miles north overnight because of a high moving up in New England, it's kind of a hard thing to do. But you're going to get a lot of that, and you just have to be respectful and let them know that, hey, there are hard decisions being made, and I made the best call, you know, from the information that was provided me.
It really is very simple. Everyone has to feel as though they have ownership in the decision, and that's done by having everyone involved in the decision. It has been said that sometimes the decision is not going to be to the liking of the parent and so be it if that is the reality of the condition. But everyone should have ownership in the decision, and that happens in a manner in which is related to your previous question of how you would address the concerns of the individuals.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Favazza.
Hi. Thank you all very much for applying, and I was very impressed by all the different qualities that any one of you would bring to the school board. My question relates to one of the biggest issues, and I believe all of you touched on it in your application regarding school facilities, maintenance, and construction. My question is, how would you use your role as the new school board member to educate and perhaps energize parents, and more importantly, the general public about the reality that these needs and wants that many of you talked about for school construction and maintenance can't be met without a realistic discussion of new funding streams or what we're going to do with the current resources we have?
Again, information is going to be key. You need to be able to present the budget in a clear and concise manner, not the way the school board would look at it, but in the way the public can view it easily. And you need to be able to explain the decision-making process that the board goes through each and every year when they're looking at the budget, including facilities. Again, I think the more people understand the decision-making process, they may not like the outcome, but as long as they feel good about how the decision was made, then they will, they will live with it better than if they feel like it's being made in a black hole.
I think you also have to show the data to back up what you're saying. If you're saying a school can't be built because this, there's a higher priority over here, you have to have the data to back that up. I've been pushing for the last 2 years for a new facility study to update the 2005-2006 MGT of America study. I felt that the answers and responses that were given to me telling me, well, here's the priorities set in the MGT study, well, you're showing me data that was done 8, 9 years ago, and clearly it showed their 10-year projections were very wide-focused. It's kind of like a hurricane's cone of uncertainty. 10 years ago, yeah, real close, you can predict, but farther out, it went wide, and we saw growth in West County instead of up there in North County or out near Chesapeake and Old Mill. Those schools didn't see the growth that was predicted, and instead, it happened in the western part of the county and on the Broadneck Peninsula. And that's the kind of thing, you have to be able to, as a board member, back up the data with, or back up your position with the data and show the parents that this is why your school's being pushed back, or this is why your school's being pushed forward. You know, we have schools like Jessup that have, I mean, just terrible problems at Jessup Elementary. That school needs to be replaced, but the data, they're saying, oh, no, well, we need to do this one first, we need to do this one first. So I definitely think school facilities and structure, you have to be able to back it up by precise data and recent data.
Let me go back to the concept of ownership. The ownership has to be an ownership of all of the participants involved, and there has to be a reality of understanding on the parts of everyone involved, not just the administration, that being the school board and the school administration, but that of the constituency, the parents and the students. At that time, when everyone realizes that we can get this done, but maybe not in the manner in which you want it to get done, we then can start to do something that I don't believe that we have done enough of with our school facilities, and that's start to think outside the box. We need to start looking at new ways to increase funding, at new ways to accommodate individuals, and if we get people involved in an ownership, they will start to think outside the box, and that's where we will often find our solution.
As a new school board member, I would go out and look at the facility myself. I know that there may, there would be information or data that states when schools, when maintenance would be done on certain schools. But looking at it on paper, I would also want to go out to the school, take a look at the schools to see just what type of maintenance they're talking about, because reading about it for me is not enough. I need to see it as well. And also, listening and talking with the principal of that school, talking with the maintenance department, getting more information, more data before I could even begin to talk with other board members in presenting whether changes need to be made at this school first or that school, but actually looking to see, to get involved and go out and look at those schools.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Jones.
Well, welcome, everybody. I haven't had a chance to say anything yet, and thank you for coming and thank you for being involved and doing what you can for the children in Anaronda County and the community. I have one question, but Ms. Alsop, it's got to come directly to you. This Board of Education has been dealing with an Office of Civil Rights complaint since 2005. You had a hand in that complaint. You may still have a hand in that complaint. I've seen a document as recently as 2011 that bore your signature. I'm going to ask this as kind of a yes or no question, but I would like an explanation. Do you see any conflict of interest with your taking a seat on the board while being involved with a complaint against the system?
You said, "Do I see it?"
Any conflict of interest between your involvement in the Office of Civil Rights complaint and your being a policy setter on the Board of Education?
At the time that the complaint was filed, I was the president of the Anaronda County NAACP. I'm no longer the president of that organization.
So that would mean to us that you are no longer a party to that complaint?
My name is on the complaint, but the person that would be representative for that particular complaint would be our current president, and the one who would be addressing that complaint would be the current president.
So whittling your answer down to 1 word, the answer would be no?
Yes.
Okay. We had a question that I'd like all 4 of you to... We had a question that I'd like all four of you to field if the seven minutes allow. You're almost unanimously in support of Common Core, almost unanimously. It's only going to be in the very near future that teachers are going to be rated by student tests on the park exam. Do you think it's fair to rate teachers on their students' test scores?
I'll answer that. No. Because it was done to me and I was trying to deal with students that could have cared less, no matter what I did and no matter how hard I worked and no matter to what extent I tried to get them motivated. All they would do in some instances, as they filled in their multiple choices on particularly, is try and make figures out of it to see how much fun that would be. So, I think that it certainly is a measure to be considered, but not to the degree that it is being considered. I had greater value than was being shown by individuals, call them children if you may, I taught high school, that could have cared less and in some instances wanted to make me look bad.
No, no, we can't rate our teachers solely on test scores. Would, would it be a factor? Yes, of course, but we need to establish appropriate measures for all of our teachers across the board. You can't just pick one or two aspects of the results. You'll have to sit down and really carefully evaluate how every classroom is looked at. So, test scores are not the only answer.
Definitely, I think test scores should be maybe down the road part of the equation, but not in the first few years of implementing Common Core. I think it is just, I, I think it's grossly unfair to the teachers to rate them right away on something that's brand new, being adopted everywhere that they haven't, I don't think have gotten the proper training on some of this that, that they need to be able to teach it properly.
If we are going to rate the teachers based on the Common Core and, and their teaching, then we need to provide training for those teachers. We need to provide additional in-service for them, to prepare them so that they can present and teach our kids, so that the kids will be prepared and ready for passing the assessment test.
Well, let me follow up on that a minute. Presuming that extra training is provided, would you be in favor of rating them based upon the assessment then?
Not completely based on, I would say we would rate them just based on the assessment.
Let me follow up with you, Mr. Bonifas, as well. The, did I pronounce your name right?
Yes.
If you look at a secondary school teacher, a middle school teacher will see his or her students for fifty-five minutes a day. High school teacher in the double periods will see their students for about eighty minutes a day. Neither of them have any control over what, what else happens to that student over the course of the, what's left of a twenty-four hour day. Even if the park assessment has been around and even if they've, even if they, the teachers had training on it, do you think, still think it would be fair to rate teachers based upon the students' test scores?
I, I think it would be part of the evaluation. I mean, if you have, I mean, I wouldn't just rate them strictly on their parks scores. I would rate them, have it maybe be part of the overall picture of, you know, what's going on. I would also have somebody come in to evaluate the class, sit in on the class, see how the teacher's teaching. There, I mean, so many different aspects to it, but you can't solely grade them on the parks scores.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Jones. Commissioner Davenport.
First, let me, I think, agree with all of my commissioners here. Thank each one of you for submitting your resume. You have a very impressive resume, very impressive things that you've done in the community and in the school. And you know that one of the most pressing issue right now in the school system is the achievement gap. How would each one of you say that the achievement gap is closing? Or what are we, and your opinion on the achievement gap in the public schools? Start with here and then move down.
I strive, when I am involved with education, for upward academic mobility. One of my greatest sadnesses while being a fourteen-plus-year teacher mainly in Baltimore City was seeing the standards lowered to accommodate success. We went from a passing seventy to a passing sixty to help promote the achievement gap closing. I do not approve of that. I approve of raising our standards and raising the achievement gap so that when we have success, we have success at a high level, not just success for the name of success. Now, how do we do that with achievement gap? We work with the individuals that need to have that success brought to the fore. Some individuals don't need to do that because they're self-motivated, but when we get into a mindset of lowering standards, which is I think a problem for our achievement gap, so that we can accommodate individuals, we get into a, a condition where we're doing irreparable harm to our students.
Okay, thank you.
I think we constantly need to strive for improvement and there's always ways to improve something. I see us starting at the bottom. I think the elementary schools have plenty of room for improvement and if we build a strong base with the younger children, that the gap will be lowered as they get older. It's a lot less expensive to educate the younger kids and once they've had five, six, seven years of schooling and that gap gets wider and wider, the task becomes more daunting and it becomes a whole lot more expensive. I think we need to look to the community. They spend, the kids spend twenty-five percent of their day in school, which means they spend seventy-five percent of the day in the community. And so, we need to continue to work with the communities in which the children live to help facilitate that learning when they're outside the schools.
I think I, number one thing we need to do is lower class sizes. I think the class sizes are getting too large and I think a lot of kids are falling through the gap, especially in high school. I mean, we're trying to have high school classes of about twenty-three students to twenty-five students and we currently have between twenty-eight and the mid-thirties and that's a number I heard from Alex Stackner, it was just the last week. We also need to get greater parental involvement. If you're going to fight the achievement gap, you have to show the kids that their education is important and you have to show it from both parents or if they're from a single-family home, from that one parent. They have to see that their education's important and if they see that, they're going to work harder for it and they're going to try harder. And, I mean, that's one of the, the watchdogs program I'm running at Crofton Meadows, getting the dads in there. I've seen a lot. I mean, the discipline's gone down in the school, the discipline problems and a lot of these kids just see how much more, how important their, it is to their dads that their education is to them and these kids have, the dads too, have said, oh wow, I never knew this much was going on at school, how much they've learned in one day and the kids feed off of that. And I think that's something that can help with the achievement gap. And we've seen the parental involvement at Chesapeake Science Point Charter School. I sat down with Spear Lancaster and he went over a lot of the numbers and showing how parental involvement can really change that. And I mean, they've pretty much done away with the achievement gap up there.
When I look at, when I think about closing the achievement gap, we began to look at the, the academic of closing the achievement gap back in 2005. And when, as we began to work with the Anaronda County Public School System, there have been programs that have been put into place. The achievement gap was closing like one percent a year and we, as we looked at this, how slow it was closing and as we began to talk with the Anaronda County Public School System as well as community leaders meeting with the school system, there has been much improvement. The gap is not yet closed and we still need to continue to work on it.
One additional question from each of you. What is, if you had to tell me just one strength that you bring to the board, what would that be? Just kind of explain it for me.
Briefly. I, I think my ability to, to manage a budget and to manage fiscal policy. It's what I do on a daily basis and when it comes down to it, the education system is a billion-dollar business and it needs to be run efficiently and effectively. And I think it really, it, you know, we always hear about, oh, we need facilities, we need resources. It all comes down to money and it needs to be managed properly.
I'm a big-picture thinker. I think that's the strength that I'd bring to the board. I, I look at how all the different parts inter, interact and how they relate to each other and being on the board, you're dealing with fifty-one percent of the county budget. It's not just here that the policy's being made, it's also policies are affecting the county council. Things they do affect the Board of Education. Things the county executive does affect the State House affects the Board of Education. So, being able to bring it all together and look at that and see that and see the patterns and see how it works, I mean, that's just kind of what I think is one of the strengths I'd bring.
And one of the strengths that I believe that I would, well, one of the strengths I know I would bring to the board is my ability to work with others and working with others and utilizing my leadership skills as I work with other members of the board.
Very simply, a commitment to find the solution of whatever we're involved with. That is a strength that I have whenever I am involved with any type of situation. I will find the solution with the help of others perhaps, but there will be a solution that will be acceptable.
Thank you. Commissioner Bukowski.
Thank you. I'd like to thank you first for your willingness to serve. I am impressed by the wealth of talent and experience that's, you know, you've all demonstrated in the applications that you've sent forward and, and what you've shared tonight. My question is, what is your expectation of the time commitment and your level of involvement as a member of the board and how will you manage board duties with your day-to-day personal and professional obligations? Mr. Bonifas?
I mean, I expect it to be, you know, twenty to thirty to sometimes forty hours a week being on the board. I expect to be out visiting the different schools around the county if I'm in a, whether or not I'm in the at-large seat or the District Thirty-three seat. I want to see what's going on in the schools because that's where you learn. You listen to the principals, you listen to the parents and the PTAs. I like to sit in on, on meetings and just hear what's going on because you see that in the community, you find out what's going on in the schools. So, as far as me, is my time commitment. I run a small business, a photography business. I plan to possibly shut it down and focus on this. I'm doing a lot of things on education committees and other things that keep me busy, but I, I have plenty of time for the board and I will make it my number one priority.
Thank you.
Time commitment, I think would probably take about twenty hours a week, I would expect because it's not just being here at the board meetings is what you do when you go in, and there are many times I've heard the board go into closed session, so that's additional time. And preparing for those meetings. I would need time to prepare for the board meetings and be able to respond to issues that are brought before the board. As far as managing my time, I just retired, so I have plenty of time.
I wouldn't put a number of hours per week. I would do what it takes to get the job done. There may be weeks where it's forty hours, there may be weeks where it's five. The nice thing is I have a fairly flexible federal job that does allow me to work from home, that does allow me to work odd hours. So, I can, I'm at work sometimes at six AM, but then back home by two or, or two-thirty. So, I do have the flexibility to be able to meet any needs of the position and, and my time management skills are, are excellent and I'd be available whenever necessary.
Not, um, not, excuse me, not only am I retired, my wife intends to retire in June. My children, thank God, are thirty-eight, thirty-four and way far gone. I have an inordinate amount of time if I so choose to attribute it to a, a condition or a situation and I would commit to excellence with my time and that's how it would be spent.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Okay, Chairman gets to take his turn. So, this is going to be a little rapid-fire with the four of you, okay? Because one of the benefits of having my fellow commissioners go before me is they always ask wonderful questions. So, I will reiterate, I thank all of you for participating this evening and, and your applications. So, first question, and I'm going to have this, all four of you answer the question. We did not hear much about it thus far, but have charter schools been good for the county? Yes or no, Ms. Alsop?
I think yes. And, well, some of them. I, I, when I think of charter school, I think about Chesapeake Science Center and I look at and I, I've visited Chesapeake Science Center and the students that are there and they have excelled.
Yes, they have. Did you want us to go? Yeah, they have and I think definitely, I've been up to Chesapeake Science Point twice and it's just phenomenal what these kids are doing at eighth grade. And they're good and further.
Absolutely. I mean, there's certainly a time and a place and a quantity for charter schools. What we have so far has certainly worked and I believe they need to be explored to expand the, expand the program.
I love charter schools. I was on the Board of Directors at Sojourner Douglas in the attempted development of a charter school, which has not come to fruition, but hopefully someday it will and I think that they are the greatest thing going in an upward mobility concept.
Very good. Each one of you also talked in your applications about fiscal management, accountability. We've heard a lot about transparency. Next theme I'd like to hear from each one of you about is independence and the independence by and between the school superintendent and the county executive. So, I'm going to start with you, Mr. Angeles.
Would you, I, I didn't understand the independent concept.
Right, so, I'm going to start with you. So, independence, independence of thought, independence of actions and not having undue influence bind between the elected branch of government and a representative of the school system trying to run, as Mr. Appel has, has said, a, a one-billion-dollar enterprise. So, where do you see the lines being drawn in terms of independence bind between the school superintendent and the county executive's office?
I think they each have their own particular position that they have to enforce and, and be involved with. We have had instances in the recent past where the county executive and the school superintendent barely spoke with each other and that was a travesty. We presently have what I believe to be a better situation. They have to be independent, but they have to understand that they are part of the entire process. The school system has a 1.1 billion-dollar budget, but it's not the only budget in the county. And at the same time, the, the county executive, knowing that the school system will sometimes do things with their monies that he or she may not approve of, has to understand that they have to have a great working relationship. I've worked for county executives where once the money was taken out of the county budget, it was spent in other matters from which it was stated that would happen and the county executive and the school superintendent then did not work in tandem. That cannot occur.
Okay. Mr. Appel?
Obviously, the three boards need to work both independently and together and I feel one of the roles of the school, school board would be to promote teamwork amongst the three. And so, there's going to be times where they disagree and there'll be times where they're going to agree to disagree. But again, as long as decisions are made and all parties walk away from the table feeling good about the way that decision was made, I think the three will continue to work well together.
I think it has to be a valuable partnership between the superintendent and the county executive. They're, they need to work together, they're working on the same budget. The school system has half of it, county executive has the other half and, I mean, they- they can shuffle things around, but they need to see a common vision and get their vision across so they can work together and make sure they pass this and get it through and also work with the county council on that.
Ms. Alsop.
I think the superintendent does need independence. It's the school board who hired the superintendent, and that's, and we hire the best person to run our public school system. However, there needs to be a partnership and a relationship built with the county executive and the county council, and they all need to work together for the betterment of Anaronda County kids.
Very good. I'm going to pick up on a question that Commissioner Favazza had asked, and I heard you, candidate Angeles, so I'm going to start back with you about thinking outside the box related to our maintenance and backlog problem in school construction and our facilities. So my direct question is, would you be open to having the county school system leverage private-sector dollars in public-private partnerships to build new schools or to refurbish older ones?
I think that's a good, you know, outside-the-box concept that I think deserves exploration. My only concern with something like that is that there has to be a level of secession, a time limit on funding. Unfortunately, in many instances, when those type of concepts occur, they occur and never cease. But I think that that's a wonderful concept that could have a lot of unanimity in the community.
Okay, Mr. Appel.
I would be in favor of bringing private-sector funds into the system with some trepidation. I think it would be critical that transparency remained so that no entity felt like that they had any additional influence on the board. So while I think it's certainly something worth exploring, I would explore it with caution.
Mr. Bonifas.
I definitely, I came out last, the General Assembly session, testified in support of Kathy Vitale's bill, HB 349, which was trying to use private funds or a private investor to build a school and allow it to be, to lease back to the county, and after 20 years, transfer title back over to the school system for basically a dollar. And, but it had to be outside maintenance of effort. And I pushed for that, and I will support that if it comes back again. I think there are a lot of investors out there that know education is a good investment, and they will invest in building schools, whether it be, you know, new construction or refurbishing schools. I think it's just a way to bring them in, and I'm totally for it. I think we need to make up those budget shortfalls that way.
Thank you. Ms. Alsop.
And you mentioned maintenance backlog and school construction, and you said private funding, private?
Private fund, leveraging private funds such as in a public-private partnership.
I think that's something we could begin to look at and as something different. But I don't have enough information, whereas I could really make an informed decision at this time.
Totally fine. And if you'd like, all the candidates have to follow up, if you have any additional thoughts on that, that would be, that would be fine. So I'd like to thank this panel. We appreciate your time this evening, sticking in there, going up first. You can exhale. So we're going to have our second panel. Thank you very much. So we'll have Ms. Kane, Alice Kane, Kia Chandler, and Kevin Chase.
Thank you.
You had asked to bring three additional copies.
If you've brought hard copies of your written, open statements, you can leave them with counsel here at the end of the table, Michelle Davis here at the end.
Mr. Chairman, when the, when the candidates come forward, could we have them shift one seat to their left?
Sure.
My colleague to the right and myself are unable to, you know, to see the individual that is behind the podium.
Yes, they want you to shift ones to your left so the Chamber of Commerce and the county executive's office can have full view of the candidates, so.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Well, we have our second panel with us, and I'd like to thank them for coming out this evening and certainly participating in the process. As we did before, you'll have a five-minute opening statement, and then after that, we will proceed to the commission with questions. So with that, I'd like to recognize Ms. Kane for five minutes, and just make sure your microphone is on when you go. Yeah, I think that's on. Yeah, there you go.
Thank you, Chairman Green, Vice Chair Davenport, and commission members for the opportunity to testify this evening. I'm the parent of two Anaronda County Public Schools children, and I'm grateful every day that my kids are getting an exceptional education. My goal as a board member would be to ensure that every child in Anaronda County experiences that same level of excellence. I've spent the past 25 years working to close achievement gaps in our nation's schools. Two achievement gaps concern me most: the performance gap between students from different socioeconomic backgrounds within the U.S. and the performance gap between U.S. students and their peers in other countries on international assessments such as PISA. I've looked at achievement gaps from many different angles, as a parent, teacher, and staffer for the Children's Defense Fund, the U.S. Department of Education, and the education committees in the U.S. Congress, where I earned a reputation as a consensus builder who worked well with Democrats and Republicans alike. That is all too rare, but the way I saw it, I was being paid by the taxpayers, and every taxpayer I know, myself included, wants a government that works together, finds common ground, and gets results. My interest in achievement gaps began in the early 1990s when I taught GED classes in Washington, D.C., and saw firsthand the devastating impact of the socioeconomic achievement gap. My students, many of whom had dropped out of high school or graduated without the skills they needed for college or a career, ranged from teenagers to senior citizens to refugees. I started every semester by asking them why they were there. Their answers and their dreams were the same as all of us in this room, starting with usually wanting to be able to provide for their families. But the road between where they were and where they wanted to be was long, and I was struck by the tragedy of what could have been if they'd gotten a solid education the first time around. I saw policy as a way to work for big changes that were needed, and I've worked in education policy ever since. The education policy work I'm most proud of includes, first, helping design the Teacher Excellence for All Children grants that provide up to $16,000 in upfront tuition assistance to promising graduate and undergraduate students who agree to teach in high-need schools or high-need subjects like STEM or special education. Second, securing support for teachers and principals to reduce overcrowding, rebuild schools, and address other problems in Gulf Coast schools after Hurricane Katrina. And third, helping craft the equity provisions in the federal race to the top legislation. I currently work at Teach Plus, a national teacher-leadership organization that improves results for urban children by ensuring that a greater proportion of students have access to effective, experienced teachers. We recruit some of the country's best teachers to go together as teams into high-poverty schools where they lead teacher-designed turnaround model. These schools are closing the achievement gap faster than any other schools in the districts where we operate. In fact, among our first set of schools in Boston, all of our schools have improved since 2009 to the point that they are out of turnaround status. I've learned what an incredibly complex set of problems schools face, and while there's no easy answers, I see real opportunities for significant progress. One opportunity is the effort to raise standards for all students in Maryland through Common Core. This is essential, but higher standards alone are not enough. We need to find ways to get more of our best teachers in front of the kids who need them most. The Equity Plan that Maryland is required to submit to the U.S. Department of Education this June provides an excellent opportunity to take concrete steps to address this problem. New equity data released earlier this month is attached to my testimony. It shows that 10 of Maryland's highest-poverty schools are here in Anaronda County. I would like for our teachers and principals, including educators from these 10 schools, to be part of the process and have, and share their expertise with the leaders at the State Department of Education who are writing Maryland's plan. A second opportunity is the transition to next-generation assessments, including the PARC assessment. We know from other states using PARC that our test scores will very likely decline this spring. The board should make sure parents know this is coming, why this is coming, and this is not schools falling down on the job, but quite the opposite. Schools are stepping up to close the achievement gap between the U.S. and other countries and make sure our kids will have the skills and knowledge they need to be successful, not just today, but in the world that they will live in when they graduate, a world that's changing fast and that demands better critical thinking and problem-solving skills than ever before. The board needs to support our educators during every step of this transition and make sure the strongest possible supports are there for students who are struggling. Third, based on evidence from districts that have successfully pushed back start times to after 8:00 a.m., I see this potential change as a promising investment. Brookings Institution economists found that early start times are associated with lower academic performance and that later start times would increase academic achievement by .175 standard deviations with a benefit-to-cost ratio of at least nine to one. Finally, I would like to find cost-effective ways to expand the reach of our wonderful pre-K and magnet programs, including STEM, IB, and PVA. In conclusion, my perspective as a parent, as a former teacher, and as a person who has committed my entire professional life to public education would allow me to make a unique and meaningful contribution to the Board of Education. I ask that you give me a chance and forward my name to the governor for consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kane. Ms. Chandler.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Ms. Vice Chairman, and to fellow commissioners. My name is Kia Chandler, and I've submitted my application for the District 33 and at-large seats available for the Anaronda County School Board of Education. My sole purpose in applying is to be a voice for doing what's in the best interest of children, staff, and the administration. As an attorney with a background in family and juvenile law and as a parent of students in the school system, my life has become about involving the lives, excuse me, improving the lives of children and families. I've served within our schools, on educational committees, task force, and panels. My desire to be a board member is an extension of my desire to serve the community at large. I've committed to improving the quality of our public school system and realize that serving as a policymaker is one of the most direct ways to make sure the quality of our schools increases. I believe that our students can succeed, and our schools can be even greater, in part by focusing on helping all students excel academically, ensuring we have a focused and strategic budget that puts our money towards what works for students, and by building stronger community partnerships to ensure our entire community is moving in one direction, standing with our students, and offering the support that they need. I understand that it's not the role of a board member to get into the day-to-day decisions that occur in and around our school system, but rather to think about the bigger picture and develop policies that guide the decisions of school officials. In order to develop those policies, you have to know what's working and what's not working. You have to be willing to and able to ask the right questions. You have to get involved and be engaged in the community, and you have to be willing to listen to feedback from stakeholders to help inform your thoughts and guide your decisions. And this is what I'm willing to do. If given the opportunity to serve on the board, I'd come with a listening ear, commitment to raising up community of students who believe that they all can succeed, a desire to empower staff with the tools necessary to make that happen, and a perspective on diversity that believes that all children belong and that we all truly want them to succeed. I'm engaged in the Anaronda County Public School Systems. However, if there are issues that I'm not fully aware of, what I'd say to that is, I'm a fast learner. If given the opportunity to serve on the board, I'd use my legal skills and training to gather information and ask the necessary and tough questions, and use my experience as a committee member, task force member, and parent of children currently attending school in the county to seek out all possible solutions, all in an effort to make the best-informed decision for our school system as a whole. Thank you to each and every one of you.
Thank you. Mr. Chase.
Good evening. I'm Kevin Chase of Annapolis. While thinking of a direction for my comments to you, I thought of a number of possible themes. Four and a half years ago, Germantown Elementary began the journey to become an international baccalaureate or IB world school. The authorization process was a collaborative effort between the students, the faculty, and the parents. Our PTA was fully supportive of the process, and we became all-in to the program. I participated in the authorization site visit by the IB evaluators. My wife is now an IB ambassador, and my son has moved up to the IB program at Annapolis Middle School. Therefore, I chose to use some of the IB learner-profile traits as a navigational tool to describe my desires and qualifications to serve on the Board of Education. First trait I'd like to discuss is being knowledgeable. Board members must be knowledgeable of the business the organization is undertaking. Educating over 80,000 students requires a large and diverse operation. The Soul System undertakes tasks from teaching a child to spell their sight words to purchasing millions of dollars of goods and services. The members of the board must be knowledgeable of these tasks, but not every member can be a master of each. As a longtime member of the business community, I am very knowledgeable in operational efficiency and effectiveness. I've managed multimillion-dollar projects with the federal government, negotiated hundreds of contracts with vendors, restored financial stability to a local sports club, just to name a few. I have a bachelor's in engineering from Maryland, an MBA from Johns Hopkins, and I hold a project management professional certification. These educational achievements, along with my 20-plus years of business experience, will be put to good use to augment the many talents of the board. The next trait is to be a good communicator. To be a good communicator, you must be a good listener and participate in the conversation with mutual respect. I feel comfortable in collaborating with a wide variety of situations, whether it be working with chief operating officers who want to discuss results, to working with passionate parents who want to add programs to our PTA activities. All these situations require the ability to communicate in order to find common ground. Being collaborative and productive for the benefit of the organization is ultimately the goal. For instance, over the past two years, I have managed the Navy Stadium parking operation for our PTA. This operation involves interfacing with many parties, such as the Naval Academy Athletic Association, the Surrounding Residence Association, the Soul System, and various city and county departments. I know the key to a good communication is to be open and honest. I know there is, it is always best to get ahead of issues and bring parties to the table. Organizations are run by people, and people are more willing to be helpful if they have been treated with respect and honesty in the past. The next trait is to be balanced. The school board must be a balanced organization. It must balance the requirements to provide the best educational outcomes for all of our students to the expectation from our county residents to get the best value for their tax dollars. The board members must be balanced the desire to expand programs with the constraints of budget. In my past business and nonprofit experience, I've had to make hard choices in good times and bad. I've been on company teams who have implemented reductions in forces to raising tuition of over 5% at a capacity as vice president, or, excuse me, vice chairman at the Smithsonian preschool. But I've also been part of growth tasks, such as adding employees when business is expanding, to adding new museum educator positions at the same school. These choices have been very difficult but must be tackled with balance in mind. Not all decisions will be applauded, some will be vilified, but as a community, we must address these hard choices, both positive and negative, and I know I have demonstrated that I can make these choices. In conclusion, one of the learner-profile traits is being a risk-taker. Applying for this position requires me to be a risk-taker. All of us who are here have a strong desire to improve the experience of our children. Our schools are better off thanks to the collaborative efforts of everyone involved in the process. I'd like to thank my fellow applicants. The sheer number of applicants is testament to the desire to improve our schools. I'd also like to thank all of you on the commission for your time and effort to conduct these, this process. I'd also like to thank my wife, and my family, and my friends for supporting me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chase. Very good. We're going to move to our commission questions, the next round, since we have three. We were being liberal before, but we'll do seven, seven minutes, seven, eight minutes. Commissioner Bukowski, would you like to start us off this round?
Okay, thank you.
She's looking at me like, I don't know, but yes.
Well, I'll go back to the same question I asked the first team. Your expectation of the time commitment, your level of involvement, and how you will manage to meet the demands of this, along with your professional and personal life? Start with you, Ms. Kane.
That's a great question and one that I've been thinking about. I've spoken with some of the current board members about the time commitment, and it's very clear to me that there's a whole lot more involved than just the meetings.
very clear to me that there's a whole lot more involved than just the meetings. I did not make the decision to apply lightly. I have talked to my employer about the fact that I've done this. I actually flew down, I'm in the middle of a three-day staff retreat that's in Boston, and I flew down after being in Boston all day. I'm flying back up at 6:00 in the morning, so I'm not missing that. But I've talked to my employer about it, and I'm doing this with their support and will be able to structure my schedule in a way that I can meet those demands. It's certainly my understanding that it's much more than the equivalent of more than a part-time job. I too did not submit my application lightly, certainly being an attorney. I do have certain demands, as do all the applicants who have applied. Fortunately, I do run my own practice, so I can dictate the workload that I have, and I'm fortunate to have staff to assist me. I partake in things that I believe in and I'm passionate about, and that's what I feel about being a school board member currently, right now. If I want to partake in and just be a guest reader for my son, I could have a trial in the morning, and I will stop what I'm doing and then go to my son's school and read, and then I'll come back and I'll finish up client work at the end of the day. That's just how I look at what I'm interested in and what I believe in, and education is one of those things.
It's always an interesting problem when you look at trying to take on a new volunteer organization work when you're already pretty much, you feel like you're taxed out. But I feel like most of the customers that the school system has, we all have full-time jobs, we're balancing raising kids, you know, doing our work as well as trying to serve our community. The best way to describe the amount of effort is going to be a second full-time job on top of the third full-time job you already have is raising kids. But I've been doing this type of work for over 10 years, and I've all, you always find ways to find extra time and do what's expected of you and what you desire to do.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Davenport.
Thank you. Again, I'm going to just commend all of the three of you for your resume that you sent in, very impressive. But the question for all three of you, have any of you ever attended a board meeting? And yes, why, why not? Or have any of you ever attended any of the budget hearing that we have around the county?
I'll certainly go first. I have attended board meetings before. I was appointed to the Board of Education's Ethics Panel, and I didn't have to be present, but I did show up just to see what goes on and how long they last and who all comes. So I did have an occasion to attend one in the evening, and I can't quite remember the last part of your question. You asked about, in addition to attending board meetings, you asked...
The budget hearing.
I have not attended a budget hearing, but as part of the Board of Education Citizen Advisory Committee, we do have a budget workshop coming up in a few weeks. That I'll be attending.
I have not personally attended it. With all the great technology that we have, I've been, you know, I've watched them for the issues that I have been concerned about. I have attended the redistricting meetings because they're not televised, but as a, just like everybody else, you're busy, there's an offering to be able to do two things at once and keep track of the board meetings online. That's what I've taken advantage of.
I've attended a number of board meetings. I've testified at least a couple of times. I've come to board meetings about discussion of the budget, but I've not gone to county council meetings about that.
Okay. The next question from, say, was it the other one, achievement gap. Do you believe that the achievement gap has been closed? Yes or no, or why, or why not? What are your thoughts on the achievement gap being closed or not being closed?
I'm happy to jump in there. Absolutely, it can be and it has to be, and that's what I've worked for, for 25 years now. I think that in some places, we're making some progress. If this were an easy problem to solve, we would have solved it. I think that there's, you know, it's a very complicated problem. It's complicated to look at solutions, and it could take way more than the amount of time we have here. I will say, I think a critical part of the solution, we cannot do it without teachers and without teacher leaders really owning this and doing everything we can to support our teachers and to maximize the impact of our strongest teachers on students. The organization I work for was founded to try to close the achievement gap, and, you know, I'll submit a written answer with more details. It's something I've thought a lot about and have a lot of ideas on.
I would say that I think that there's been improvement, but certainly, of course, that's an area where we must do more. It's not an option. I agree with some of the candidates before me that said it starts by setting high standards and believing that all kids can succeed. I love the programs that have been going on in the county, such as the Kids at Hope philosophy, teaching kids of all ages, from kindergarten on through high school, that you can succeed, and bringing in partners from the community to instill that in them because we can't just rely. I agree that we do need to have teachers involved in that process, but I certainly believe that parents and community involvement is necessary and a must if we're going to excel at closing that gap. I do agree that it's a multifaceted answer. I mean, it's a huge issue to tackle. I believe that expanding pre-K is part of that process. I believe that kids who come into the educational system, some start at a disadvantage, so they're having to play catch-up. So that's part of it as well. I certainly do believe that we must find a way to get students to believe that they can exceed. It's not that they can't. Certainly, they can. We just have to raise the standards and then hold them accountable, and I think part of that is bringing in and finding different creative ways to getting the parents involved in that process, and where there are no parents, getting community members to stand in the gap.
I agree with most of my other candidates that it is a very hard problem to address and to solve. One of the roles that I have in my company is compliance for ISO, and ISO talks about continuous improvement. The school system has done a lot of great things with continuous improvements over the last few years. At Germantown, within, when my son was in first grade, did not make adequate yearly progress. We started his fifth grade, we were one of the first three schools to be PYP certified, IB certified. That took a lot of effort and a lot of different strategies, and to solve this achievement gap is to continually implement new strategies, but we also have to recognize the achievement gap is continuing to move. We have a larger achievement gap in the school system now with our English language learners. That population just keeps growing and growing, and we need to continue to find new strategies for those, too. So in summary, it's both recognizing we need new strategies to address the new problem that's constantly changing.
Thank you, Commissioner Davenport. Mr. Jones.
Well, let me take an opportunity to welcome you to the party also. I have a question, and I'm trying not to ask the same questions to you because you have an advantage here, and it's the first time Rowan, panel number one, was up there. So change pace a little bit. I have one, and you, each of you, I'd like to provide a response. Bob Embry was the president of the Maryland State Board of Education back in the days of the Maryland School Performance Assessment Program, which is not a whole lot different across the state of Maryland, like Race to the Top is now across the country. And he was asked what he thought the three biggest problems with public education in Maryland were, and he answered, number one, student motivation, number two, parental involvement, number three, adequate funding. You think he is still correct now, 15 years later?
I'll be short. Yes.
Can I have a brief explanation?
Yeah. Adequate funding is also, is a function of the ability for the Board of Education to get out, you know, talk about get the vote out, but the Board of Education has also got to get the word out to the business community, to the taxpayers, to all of the public in the county, that this is one of the best investments we can make to have our county succeed. We want to be the best county in the state, and want to be the best county in the country. That's what all, we all keep talking about. But we're a very tax-averse county because we don't, some of our citizens do not believe the value of the education system. So it's been a great start to talk about the, this year, regards to the studies about the return on investment. We need to take that further and get that out to all the community groups, so therefore they'll be more supportive of adding more adequate funding, both capital and operational. The school system is doing a good job of trying to do, reach out with the parent involvement workshops that have been held at many of the schools, especially the Title I schools, which is bringing in, because they're using Title I money to do it, to get the parents more involved with the education of their children, as well as student motivation. We have a lot of new programs, the IB program, the STEM, you know, the PVA. Those are all very motivating types of programs. We can, we need to continue to expand those to make them reach more students, to get them more motivated.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Chandler?
I agree. Absolutely, it's still the same. Regarding student motivation, I have a high schooler. It's very difficult to motivate her. I think with this generation, we have to find new and exciting ways to engage, to get them to learn. It's not that they don't want to, they just get very bored easily. So just finding new and different creative ways to engage them in learning, in teaching this, the same concepts that we learned. Regarding parental involvement, just go to a PTA, PTO meeting. It's four or five people and always the same ones. It's extremely difficult to get parental involvement, but if we're going to succeed at any of the issues that faces the Board and the county as a whole, you must find different and creative ways. The Board of Education has in arm the Citizen Advisory Committee that has representation for all schools. Finding new ways to possibly restructure that, to engage parents and make sure that the information that the Board has gets trickled down to parents, because there's a lot of exciting programs that the Board has that parents and everyday people don't know about, and if they did, maybe would be more involved. And of course, adequate funding. Certainly, the panel before us discussed and talked about construction and the maintenance backlog, adequate funding, and finding new sources and new ways to fund our educational needs. It's pivotal, crucial, and we must come up with, I agree, with out-of-the-box ways to provide answers to that.
All right, thank you. Ms. Kane?
I see the three biggest problems as follows. One, making sure every student has access to a great teacher every class, every year. The data I attached to my testimony from the Maryland Equity Data shows that in Maryland, low-income and minority students are much more likely to have first-year teachers. Research shows, and I, you know, I agree with this from my own experience teaching, that first-year teachers often are not nearly as effective as they are later in their career. It usually takes about three years to really hit their stride. There's much higher teacher turnover in high-poverty schools, and that has a huge impact on the culture of the school. We have to give stability and great, our best teachers in the schools and with the students that can benefit the most from that. I think the second biggest problem facing our schools is making sure that all of our teachers have all of the supports that they need to be successful, again, particularly teachers in high-poverty schools. The organization I work for, we work with thousands of teachers across the country. They're all high-performing teachers, they're all teaching in high-poverty schools, and the stories they tell you will break your heart every day about the obstacles facing their kids and just obstacles in the system, not having paper for the copier, not having computers that work. There is a huge opportunity gap in this country, and teachers are fighting the fight, walking the walk every day, and we're not doing nearly enough to help them be successful. The third thing I would say here is making sure that we have high standards for all students. I'm really worried, given what has happened with Common Core in some other states, given the fact that test scores, if Maryland is like every other state that's implemented, the new-generation assessments will go down, there could be a backlash, and I think it's really important to make sure that we have high standards for all kids. Part of the reason why states got involved in developing Common Core in the first place is if you were a student in Mississippi, you were learning in 12th grade math what students in Massachusetts were learning in 9th grade. So when those students in Massachusetts and Mississippi are later outside of their states, whether it's competing for college application or jobs later, there is a very deep inequity if some kids are getting what's in effect several years more of math education than others. So making sure we have a high bar for all kids, especially kids who have not had access to that in the past, you know, I think is absolutely critical. We've taken a huge step forward with Common Core, but we can't say we're there, and I think making sure that it's implemented well and supporting our educators every step of the way, particularly with the transition to the next-generation assessment, is absolutely critical.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Jones. Commissioner Favaza.
Hi. Thank you again, all of you, for applying, and again, I'm always amazed at your applications and all that you've done in your professional life and for the community, so thank you. I'm going to tag-team again on funding issues because it's a big issue, I think, facing, as we all know, facing the school Board, and to kind of tag-team, my question's going to be a little different in that what specific skill or talent will you be able to utilize when working with the county executive and the county council to develop some viable funding options to deal with the school facilities backlog? So I guess I'm looking for examples.
Well, I'll go first. You know, I know that we all talk about the past in Anaronda County, the not-so-nice relationship between the county executive and the school, but that has been changing in a much more positive way. I think that some of the ideas that have been floated with regards to public, private partnership, if you involve the county, can get more traction. I do have a little bit of reservation about that because, as being in companies, companies are looking for, you know, profit reason. We need to make sure that their profit motivation does not conflict with our mission as a school system and structure the partnerships to be beneficial to both sides, but they understand what they are getting out of the school system. We need to make, you know, better workforce, better customers. We need to understand what we're going to get out of the companies and why they want There's always a problem with basically the color of money when it comes to capital and operational, with the maintenance of effort. Not only to work with, have to work with the county government to change the state laws so that this county doesn't get caught out by doing something innovative.
I definitely echo the sentiments of my fellow candidate, and I do believe and think that we should explore further private partnerships, private-public partnerships. I think my variation on that is that I just don't think that we should solely rely on that in thinking of out-of-the-box type of sources to provide funding for our schools, and I guess in turn, I'm not just solely thinking about construction, I'm thinking about how we fund just the general needs of the schools. I think that we have to get to a grassroots level, and I think the more people that you bring into that conversation, the better ideas that you get, certainly even starting at the PTO, PTA, level and bringing in parents and seeing what ideas that they have for funding the needs of their own particular school. They certainly have a vested interest, their students are going there. Certainly, at Broadneck Elementary, where one of my students, one of my children attended, we came up with a different fundraising idea this past year, Race for Education, and it was just a grassroots effort, write letters to grandma and grandpa and dad and come support, send in $5, $10 for education needs here at our school that are not supported by the county, and we raised over $33,000 just doing that. So certainly...
So certainly, funding is, is, is a huge issue, but we have to look at all sources, certainly, um, partnering with the county council and the county executive, um, private-public partnerships, but we also have to look at our own schools and see what they can do to help meet some of those needs as well.
When I think about school construction, I also think about this as part of the opportunity gap, and I think back to a trip I took to East St. Louis, Illinois, after Savage Inequalities was published, and we, um, held a hearing, um, in the school library, which at that time, this was in, I believe, 1993, if you looked, if you were writing, a student in that school writing a book report, whether man had gone to the moon yet, you would say, well, we're getting close, because there were no books in that library written after 1969. Um, the plumbing in the school didn't work that day, in any of the ladies' rooms. Uh, the building was literally falling down, and the student body president got up and welcomed this delegation from Washington, DC, and he said, "If you learn one thing today and if you remember one thing from today," which I still remember, he said, "I want you to know, I get it." He said, "I see where I go to school, and I see how this school compares to the schools across town." Message received. I understand what you expect from me and my friends." And so I think that this is, you know, like I said, it stuck with me, and I think, you know, equal access to computers and books and, and bathrooms that function, you know, this is really, really important. There are schools like Tyler Heights where there's, I think, something like 400 kids sharing one hallway bathroom, and, you know, huge overcrowding problem. Um, so, so I think that we have to make this a priority in terms of your, your, part of your question about skills for how to do that. Um, I think one thing that I bring, um, having worked in some very polarized environments with people who don't like to talk to each other and, in many cases, are more interested in press releases saying they scored points than actual problem-solving, was I've, I've learned how to listen, how to bring people together, um, how to create a sense of shared ownership for the problem and shared responsibility for results. Um, I know we're short on time, I will give a written answer that goes into a little more detail, um, but I think that's something that through some hard lessons, learn the hard way, over a lot of years, that, that I'm in a place where I have a lot to bring to finding common ground and, and building consensus and, and working together for the greater good.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Commissioner Favaza. Commissioner Ferrara?
You've talked about consensus. How do you build it? Give an example and how you were able to do this.
I'll begin. Um, I think by understanding the issue, but not just understanding the issue, I think oftentimes when you bring different parties with different backgrounds to the table, that a lot of times that there's an underlying issue, something that's not being said. So being willing to stay at the table until you can get to the root of that, because sometimes that's what's holding the two sides apart. Um, I would say as an example, um, I'm a family law attorney. While I do other things, I would say, um, that there's lots of tension when you decide to break a family apart, and, um, while at times I am a litigator in a courtroom, um, oftentimes I tell, um, my clients as well as the other side, the best decision for that child is for everyone to get into the room, and let's come up with something that's going to be, uh, in the best interests of this particular child. Um, and it, it's the same thing. There's issues that are on the surface, um, that you know about, that your client has told you about, that you can hear the other side say, um, and then there's underlying things. Um, and it's, it's the ability to want to sit there, uh, and listen to those things. They may not be important to you, but it's important to them. So it's giving the other side an opportunity to be heard.
You wanted explicitly example. Um, last year I participated in the Leadership Anarundel, uh, flagship class, and our first two sessions, we have a group of 25, you know, pretty well-educated, well-meaning and very busy people that are starting off on this class, all complete strangers. One of the first things we have to choose is a project that we're going to do for the entire year, and we have about an hour to do it, to choose a project. Twenty-five different people go out, go up and present 25 different ideas from, um, shoes for a school in Pasadena to new software to help with the, um, the Business Association in Annapolis. So my approach was to get everybody onto my project, or as many as I could, was, was related to, uh, doing, um, the website, website improvements and an app for tourism in Annapolis. So it took a lot of empathy to go around and listen to other people's issues, how you can pr, bring that into your project and garner six people to come onto my team to try to tackle this project. So it's a combination of politicking, listening, talking, explaining, taking their points and turning them around into benefits to what you're trying to build as a consensus.
So one of the things I do in my job is work with teams of teachers across the country. We have a Teaching Policy Fellowship, and in different communities, we have 30 teachers at a time who do an 18-month fellowship, education policy, research, advocacy, and they work together over that period of time on one project, a change that they want to make in their community for the benefit of their students. Um, very rarely when we start that process do we have teachers who are on the same page. You know, they want to work on an issue that's usually, you know, front and center in their community, that tends to be some of the hot-button issues. Um, so one of the things, or I guess a few things I've learned about that process, and you said to give a specific example, so, uh, one of my favorite projects I worked on was in Los Angeles with Los Angeles Unified School Teachers, um, it's probably about two or three years ago, had been asked by the superintendent to provide input on how to improve the induction program for new teachers in the district, which was widely considered just completely ineffective. It's called BITSA, and, you know, teachers, you know, just had horror stories about never even meeting their mentor until they had signed something at the end of the year saying that they'd had these weekly meetings and, you know, other teachers had a great experience with a mentor across the hall, but there, there were a wide range of experiences, a wide range of ideas about what to do about it. And so the process we used, one was sharing their experiences and, and, you know, it really was from one extreme to the other, but more on the, um, on the end of, of problems, um, then looking at data. And, you know, Los Angeles is not an island, like none of the communities, and so we looked at what are other districts doing that have had success and look, you know, at outcomes and then what, what worked. Um, but also really trying to build shared ownership, how do, you know, who's going to take responsibility for what, sort of owning both the, the steps in the process and then shared responsibility for coming up with a product that they could all sign their name to, with some very specific recommendations and send to the superintendent, you know, some of which he moved forward with. So I think, um, it's not a perfect example, but I think, you know, getting the, bringing out the best of everyone involved, trying to look at a common problem and bring all the different life experiences and then also outside expertise, and then owning, um, owning the next steps, I think, is, are, are some fundamental pieces of that.
Well, as a school board member, parents will present concerns about their child's school, their teacher, the principal, snow days, um, just recently, but what is the process and what is your response to deal with this challenge?
I think the first thing is to, um, hear the issue. Um, parents want to know that they, um, are, are heard, um, and you'll clearly echo this sentiment probably throughout the vast majority of, of the questions, because I'm a parent and I've wanted to voice my own concerns, and I wanted someone to hear me. I think as a school board member, though, you have to see what the issue is, because sometimes it's not your role to necessarily solve that problem. Uh, it's not your role necessarily to get into the day-to-day, so you may have to refer the person, um, out, um, and, and to the appropriate party, superintendent or whoever else is in charge of that within the school system. Um, and I think in doing that, I think also maybe even following up with them afterwards, uh, just to make sure that their concern was, uh, addressed and appropriately, and I think it lets the parent know that you care.
Um, so as a parent, I love it when parents get involved in education. Um, you know, I, I've, um, involved in my PTA and it's just, like, I just honestly am in awe of how much some of the moms and dads, um, give and how much they love doing it. So, you know, I, I, I would want to hear from parents, I would welcome it, and I, I think would approach conversations in that spirit. Um, I do think that it's important to hear from parents who, you know, maybe have been less involved and, and to do outreach to them too. Um, it's, sometimes, um, there, there may be some school board members here who, there's a lot of familiar faces for the parents who, who come and show up at the meetings and who testify on certain issues, and it's actually a pretty small group compared to the number of parents in the county, and so I think finding ways to connect in more broadly, and particularly to parents who care but maybe haven't found the channels, um, is really important too. We're all in it together, and it's going to take all of us to solve the problems we need to solve.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Pete. Oh, did you not answer?
No, sir, I did not answer.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. Chase, sorry.
Of course, my answer will probably sound very similar, because it is a similar, similar process that a lot of people follow in a lot of different dealings with other individuals. It's a process of listening and empathizing and trying to find similar experiences that you have to what they're experiencing and try to find a common solution that you've done before. A lot of problems that come up in the school system, you know, have been tackled before, and there are plenty of great people in the school system to help that particular individual with whatever their particular problem is. It's just helping them navigate this extremely large organization to get to the root of their problem. If it's a teacher, there are plenty of processes in the system to help with the teacher, you know, starting back with the, the teacher and the team leader and the principal, but as a board, we got to make sure that we point them back to the proper process so that all parties that are affected are treated equally.
I apologize about that, Mr. Chase.
It's okay.
But, but thank you. Commissioner Peters?
Well, thank you for applying. Um, thank you for putting yourself forward, um, and demonstrating your good citizenship. We've, I think you've talked some about, in, as I look at your applications, about the role, um, of the board, and usually, um, I've heard it say that a successful school system depends upon a successful board. Another way is saying excellence in the classroom begins with excellence in the boardroom. So what I'm trying to get is to get a picture of just what your behavior would be as a board member to have a successful, um, school system. And in Ms. Chandler's, um, application, I think you, you spelled out some specifics, uh, more so than usually the, the responses are, so you don't have to necessarily say a lot, because yours is there and, and paged. Um, but for Ms. Kane and Mr. Chase, if you could explain a little bit more just what your behavior would be as a board member in order to assure a successful school system?
Do you want me to go first?
Either way.
You know, we expect our students, you know, a certain type of behavior we have in schools, basically work well and play with others. A successful board must be able to understand each other, they need to empathize with each other's points of view and respect the various points of view in any given problem. I, you know, I tend to be a mediator in a number of my boards, as well as I tend to be, um, you know, a little bit of the polymitarian. With both of those factors, I become very effective in helping all of the board members achieve their goals of trying to do a great job. Not all boards will be perfect, and then we don't expect them to be, because you want a little bit of, um, board, I don't call it board tension, but with different points of view, you're going to get that. Um, but I ta, I like to be able to, and I have demonstrated, that take the different qualities of the board members and line them up together and work well as a team.
Um, so I think there are a couple of points on this. One, I think I would want to look at what, where's the greatest value that I could bring? Just, you know, from, from, from my experiences in life and where could I plug myself in where I could do the most good? I don't know exactly the answer to that yet, um, but that's the approach I would take in terms of, you know, sort of managing my time and prioritizing, um, and trying to figure out what could I do that would do the absolute most good for Anarundel County Public Schools with, with my time. In terms of the behavior, um, I, you know, I think working hard, um, uh, with integrity, with as much transparency as possible, um, uh, you know, a, and just trying to do the best that I can with what I've got.
Okay. And Ms. Chandler, if you want to add something shortly, because I think i, as I read this, and I think you made some statements of, of, um, the collaboration and the communication, so is there anything else you want to add to that?
And, and I would, I would stand on that and just say that, uh, my answer would be that of a consensus builder and just recognizing that you are one, uh, of other, many others on the board, and that to accomplish anything, uh, that you must build a consensus among, uh, your fellow board members. Um, so we all have goals and we all may have stances that we want to take, but sometimes there's a, a time to take a stance, um, and to compromise, um, or rather I should say, sometimes there's a time to take a stance, and then others, there's a, a time to compromise in order to get something done.
And just briefly, what do you see as your relationship with the superintendent as a board member?
Collaborative, supportive, um, but ultimately, he reports to the board, he or she, um, depending who's, who's there. Um, so holding him or her to a high standard and, you know, trying to help them succeed as best they can, but within a spirit of we're in it together and let's work together to, around our shared goals to get it done.
And I agree with the same thing, um, that they are on the board as well, um, so you do work together and certainly as a resource to provide you with information that you need, um, to make informed decisions, but ultimately, um, they, um, you hire them. Um, that is one of the jobs that you have as a school board and one of probably the most important, um, because they do the day-to-day. Um, so ultimately, they report to you, and you should hold them accountable.
I agree with the statements of accountability as well as guidance and goal-setting. I've been in, I've seen boards where they have meddled too much in the executives', um, running of the organization, and I've seen boards where they have not held them accountable. Um, boards have to resist getting into the, you know, the weeds, so to speak, with how the executive is running the organization, but they must put, you know, kind fa, compounds around them with clear goals and hold them accountable to those goals.
Thank you. Commissioner Burden?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, thank you for your desire to serve.
Thank you for your desire to serve. Appreciate it very much. My questions will be predictable. First question, yes or no would be fine. We can start with you, Ms. Kane. Do you support the Common Core initiative in Maryland Public Education?
Enthusiastically.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Second question, what emphasis would you place on early childhood education in our public school curriculum?
Ms. Kane, you can start first.
Um, I think it's really important. I'm on the board of a pre-K program in Cape St. Clair, Anchors of the Week, and, you know, I, it's, it's a huge part of the answer to closing the opportunity gap and the achievement gap.
And to keep it short, I do agree, expanding early childhood education is extremely vital and I think that it does help and what is just in closing the achievement gap.
I also agree, I was on a board of a preschool. I do have reservations because there is a lot of achievement gap to be closed and there has to be a balance between how much is going to early childhood education, that is how much is going to high school programs as a balance to getting the achievement gap closed that the people coming out of the top end of the school can compete in the marketplace.
Okay. And my third question, does the business community have an investment in public education and a role to play in educating, in educating our young people? And how would you engage the business community if you feel such is the case? Ms. Kane?
Absolutely. One more piece to the pre-K question, I know Maryland just got a grant around pre-K. I think it's about $15 million and it's over multi-years, but I think there is a real opportunity there with the funding to go along with it. In terms of the business community, I think that, that to be successful, it's critical to work in partnership with the business community. I think the business community has a huge amount at stake in the schools and I've seen some really exciting examples around the country of that kind of leadership making a difference. In keeping it short, I'll, I'll just mention one that, that I'm a fan of and that's, you know, I think ExxonMobil has done amazing things around STEM education and also Common Core and in ways that have been smart and strategic and that have, have made a difference. So that's one example that I think's been helpful.
My answer is definitely resounding yes. I believe everyone needs to partner in education. I believe if you don't do it on the front end, we'll all pay for it on the back end. I think ways that they can partner and are partnering with our students here in Anarundel County Public Schools are in the classrooms as mentors, providing internships, certainly in funding needs, I think we talked earlier in another question, and as mentors. I mentioned earlier a Kids at Hope program. I just believe in answering some of the other issues such as closing the achievement gap, all students don't have parents to stand in for them and to help motivate them and to stay on top of them. And we need members of the community, including business partners, some who can relate and have backgrounds, come from the same situations as these students, to step in and talk to our students and tell them that they can succeed, tell them things that maybe they have never heard and provide them opportunities and give them second chances. So absolutely.
I agree too. There's, there's a lot of great things coming from the business community into the schools on, you know, from global companies to local companies that will send over, you know, you know, somebody to help for reading, Reading Day or to come in and help on a sea perch project. But I think we also need to look into how to measure the effectiveness because I've, in my schools that I've been, I've seen some business programs come in that aren't really being utilized. Companies think that they're donating, but the school system just doesn't have the time or the teachers don't have the time to fully implement it and garner all of the support that the business is trying to, to bring in. So, it's not only a, a board and a business, it also needs to be more work within the school system to make sure we're fully utilizing the goodwill that the businesses are trying to provide.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Burden. Okay. Thank you all. So I'm going to take my round. Ms. Kane, I want to start with you. In your application, you discussed, or at least communicated, at least, that you were less than pleased, I'm paraphrasing, sorry, about the number of students who are otherwise have STEM and IB made available to them in Anarundel County. There's, and we all know that there's lottery and there's a lot of demand. So, if you could tell me briefly, what are your ideas about addressing that demand?
That's a great question. And I, I would frame it a little bit differently than being displeased as that I, I, as a parent, I feel like it's like an abundance of riches that my kids have these opportunities they can apply for, whether it's STEM or IB or PVA. So I think it's amazing that that is out there. I know 4,000 students applied for way fewer slots than that and I, you know, I, I think that finding opportunities for every student who wants to engage in that way would, something I'd really like to dig into related to that. I think that expanding foreign language opportunities and language immersion, before we moved to Anarundel County, my oldest son was in a two-way immersion program where he, and he's still somewhat fluent in Spanish from that. But I think there's some really interesting models out there that don't necessarily have to be, now, you know, they can be very expensive, but I was talking to a legislator in Indianapolis, Indiana, last week who was telling me about a program that at no cost to the district, Chinese teachers in China will come to the U.S. and they're trying to bring them to Indy, Indianapolis Public Schools to teach a Chinese immersion program. And I think the business community is helping make this happen, but it's at no cost to the district because there's other interested parties who want to help. I'm not saying that's something we should necessarily do here, but I thought it was a really interesting example of looking at partnerships and I do, I do think that finding ways to maximize opportunities like that for students is something I'm so excited to try to make happen if I get this opportunity.
Am I inferring from your answer that you would help, your answer utilized or leveraged partnerships to address our STEM demand? Or were you talking specifically about foreign language immersion programs?
I'm talking about both. I was, yes. And thank you, you said it better and more concisely than I did it this last hour.
That's fine, just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Chandler, you, you have children in different schools, at different ages, which I, which is wonderful, but you also have experience, I was reading through your application in Broadneck and then your work on the Citizens Advisory Committee for the Annapolis Secondary Cluster. So, I'm curious, Annapolis Middle, Bates, right, those, those schools? So, if you could just briefly compare and contrast what may be happening in the Broadneck feeder system in Peninsula with the Annapolis Cluster right now, in your opinion? In terms of education, achievement, priorities, what are the main differences you see in between the two, the two clusters?
Well, certainly diversity. You can just start there. I do have an elementary school student at Broadneck and a high school student in Annapolis PVA program. And I'll tell you, to be honest, I didn't know much about Annapolis when I moved my daughter from Broadneck High School to Annapolis. So it has been even a learning curve for myself the past three years, just getting up to speed on a lot of the issues concerning Annapolis. Certainly resources. Broadneck Elementary School, I would just even say that their PTA is a well-run machine is how I would summarize it and they have the funding resources to meet some of the needs of the school. And it, for there, that, that's an elementary school, so you have more parent involvement. At Annapolis, I think that you, and I've come to see that you have a lot of people who are concerned and care about the Annapolis, that cluster, that area, and certainly with the redistricting that's going on to alleviate overcrowding. So you do have a parent involvement, I would say, at both. Certainly at Annapolis, when I took a tour of the school, what was said to me from a student, and I just asked the student, well, how do you like the school? And the student said, and this was two and a half years ago, the student said to me, well, this is the jail or Yale school. And it took me aback. By that point, my daughter had already been accepted into the program and I had already signed saying that she would go. So I went into the vice principal's office and I just waited for an hour and I said, I need to know what's going on at the school. I would say changes have been made. I would say that I, I decided to get further involved because I wasn't sure what was going on and I did join the Citizen Advisory Committee to become part of the, the solutions as, as opposed to just saying, the school is not good enough, but what can I do? How can I become part of that? And I do think that changes have been made and, and more are coming. Not just at Annapolis High School, but I also see a lot of changes being made at Annapolis Middle as well as Bates.
Good, thank you. Mr. Chase, I want to, a little dialogue between you and I about fiscal accountability, management, one of the things that certainly screams out from your professional background. Lot of fiscal management, your experience, government contractor, ISO certification, things that you said, compliance. Have you had the chance to review the capital and operational budgets of the school system for the last couple of fiscal years?
Yes, well, my, my kids started coming here. I've been looking at them and...
And in your estimation, do those capital budgets represent, in your estimation, the priorities of where the school system should be or is heading in terms of, in the right direction? Does, does the budget articulate the priorities and the correct priorities in your estimation?
The priorities line up to what the study has said it should be. I'm not always sure that the school system is keeping up with the rapid changes in our county.
Why do you say that?
We have, you know, very large growth in, particularly in the city of Annapolis with ELL and it's now finally catching up, but it's been a problem for a few, a number of years, especially at Germantown and, you know, also in north part of the county. The, there's been a change in the demographics, as we say, or the population, there's people, there's been a lot of movement in the county, so to speak, from where we thought we'd have population centers to where we have more growth than we expected. So, you know, we look at Germantown, we put in a new school in, we've been in there four years, we're at 110% capacity. We also look out into the West County where we built new schools and, you know, there's entire fifth grades are already in portables in schools we just built four or five years ago. We're not getting out ahead of our problems financially as well as with data about how our school system is changing, our, our county is changing and how our school system should be changing with that.
Okay, well, thank you. Thank you for that answer and thank you for all of those answers. So that's going to conclude this panel. We are going to take a very brief five-minute recess. It will come back with our final panel, which will be Giovanni Diamici, Thomas, Tom Frank, Dean Herring. Kelly Fagan of Crofton has withdrawn her application, so she will not be testifying tonight. So, we're going to have a brief five-minute recess and we'll come back.
of these schools as high as it is and possibly improve it. I bring to this, to the board, some qualities that, some characteristics that maybe are not quite as common. Can you hear me? You want it louder.
You can just bring the microphone a little closer to you.
Okay, I'm sorry. I am an immigrant. I'm the first one of my family in the United States. I used to be an alien, then I became a resident alien, then I became a citizen. And that's about as far as I'm going to go. I'm not, I have not desired to become a senator or congressman or anything else, anything more than that. We have two children, they're both in elementary school. My oldest one has seen three different school systems in four years for schooling. The first two were in California, the last one for two years now in Crofton. The young one has entered kindergarten in Crofton and now is in first grade and seems to be doing fine. He likes it. What I've seen is the difference between the education and the work that my oldest one was required to do in California, which in a district which was reputed to be extremely good, and what has been asking to do in Crofton. And there is no comparison. There is, they are teaching him better, they are teaching him more here. And I wanted to remain that way. And I wanted to remain for the rest of his school career and for my second one, career entire. That's why I joined, I joined their ways. I heard a lot of discussion, I read a lot of discussion about STEM in the schools. I apply STEM every day in my life, in my career, in my job. I've done it for more than thirty years now. My education is in physics and astronomy. I'm gonna consider myself an astrophysicist. So math is bread and butter. I'm a little disappointed to see that the excellent magnet schools that offer STEM are so oversubscribed that we have to go to a lottery. I would like to work to resolve that situation and be able to offer to all the children who want, all the parents also, who wants that opportunity for their kids, the possibility to do it. Ideally, you don't have to apply anymore. All schools offer the same quality of education, all schools offer the same opportunity. That's a pie in the sky maybe. Funding is always a problem. But that's what I would like to work toward achieving. To the board and to the school system, I think I can bring a system engineering approach. When we put together a satellite, it's not enough if one part works well. Everything must work well and together. And I see that the school system has to be the same way. A great elementary school does not do much for a child if it's then dumped into a not-so-great middle school. All levels have to provide education, quality education. So, for this reason, I would like your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Frank.
Hello, hello. Mr. Green and other members of the commission, thank you for the time that you've taken in consideration of my application. I'd like to start off by telling you that at some time ago, my son Scott was in the sixth grade at Crofton Elementary School, and I volunteered to teach a class of logic to sixth graders whose parents dropped them off to school an hour earlier. I've always believed in challenging students and giving them an opportunity to learn, and ultimately, they rise to the occasion. At some time after that, I got involved in our Crofton Middle School and became a judge of, at the request of one of the principals there, of one of their science fairs, and continued in that when even more recently, the folks at the Chesapeake Science Point asked me to continue to do that. When my daughter began attending Arundel High School, at that point, the then principal there asked me to be a member of their so-called school improvement team. And at that point, that gave me an opportunity to get involved with the school and meet a number of principals that included Mr. Will Myers and Sharon Stratton, who are still principals there. And perhaps more importantly, it gave me an opportunity to have a personal relationship and understand that we really did have some really extraordinary teachers that I got to know firsthand. At some other point, there became an opportunity that was called an instructional leadership conference, and our superintendent at that time asked me to attend a meeting in Chicago. And as I recall, Mr. Jones had the opportunity to accompany to that meeting, and it gave us an opportunity to look at schools across the nation and come back and look at what we might do here compared with folks we're doing in other parts of the country. Ultimately, I think the thing that is of primary interest to me has to do with academic achievement. And we have a significant number of kids that just unfortunately are not doing well. I've had an opportunity recently to talk to Dr. Alato, and he seems to want to begin at the beginning, and that is the curriculum at elementary schools. I don't know that we've ever had a superintendent that has been willing and able to look at our education at our elementary schools, because once kids start off there, that really determines how well they're gonna do once they get to higher levels. And ultimately, I think one of my big concerns is we just unfortunately don't have enough kids that graduate from high school. And to me, that's the, that's the metric that is important. Everything, to me, revolves around how many kids are graduating from high school that start in elementary school. So I'd like to see if I could be on the school board and help with these things. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Frank. All right, so we're gonna start our round of questions, and we're gonna go back to the chairman's left, start with Commissioner Burden, and proceed. I wanna say clockwise, but maybe it's not, I don't know. Commissioner Burden.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First question, and it's a yes or no question. We can start with you, Mr. Frank. Do you support the Common Core Initiative in Maryland Public Education?
In terms of a yes or no answer, the answer is yes. I'd love the opportunity to elaborate on that.
Okay, go ahead.
I have somewhat of a concern with Common Core, and that is, this was a program, and I'm ambivalent on it. This was a program that came to this county, to this state, across the country, and I'd like to believe that all states are different. On the other hand, I really believe in some type of common education, and I'd like to see all kids do well in what I call reading, writing, and arithmetic. But I'd like to have our county decide the best way to implement that program, and it concerns me that there are mandates that have come to our school system that have made it very difficult for some teachers to figure out how to do that in a short period of time.
Okay, thank you.
Qualified, yes. Yes, because I'm convinced that a common base of instruction is needed for countrywide. You cannot have different school boards set different standards and different curricula. You need a common base.
Okay.
At least in those three subjects, reading, writing, and arithmetic. Qualified, because while different people learn different ways, I don't think that everybody should learn the same, all the same things. I see multiplications being taught in four different techniques, which is great, because not all kids will understand their way of doing it like I had to. But I don't think that all kids should learn all four ways. Everybody should be able to choose whichever way works for himself. I think I'd like to see a little more flexibility.
Okay, thank you. Second question, again, we can start with you, Mr. Frank. What emphasis would you place on early childhood education in our public school curriculum?
Well, as I mentioned in my opening remarks, I don't know that there has really been an emphasis on our elementary education that our current superintendent is willing to emphasize. And once kids have the opportunity to learn and do well in elementary school, they're likely to continue to do better. So I'm not, perhaps you could elaborate on your question, and I could maybe be a little more specific.
Well, when we're speaking of early childhood education, I think we are addressing those issues where we're looking at pre-K, K, all the way up to five, grade five. And certainly, there have been interests expressed among the commissioners about the achievement gap. And if you'd like to make the connection between where an investment in early childhood education could address the achievement gap, that would certainly help to elaborate.
Well, I certainly would like to see as much emphasis as is possible with our large school budget spent on early childhood development. There are limitations to what can be done. I can only mention that I have a grandchild that goes to school in Indianapolis, Indiana, and she is now seven years old, and she's learning Mandarin. So there are many opportunities that, you know, we could add to our school system if we have the resources and the will to put them in place.
Okay, thank you.
As an equalizer, early childhood education is important. I am a little concerned, actually more than a little concerned, about pushing the start of the school years on the way to age four. I think that at that level, a child still is entitled to have a happy childhood. And we're looking more, we should be looking more at the quality daycare more than formal instruction. Universal kindergarten, yes. Quality elementary school, absolutely.
Okay, thank you. And my final question, does the business community have an investment in public education and a role to play in the education of our young people? And if so, how would you engage the business communities and member of the Board of Education?
Does the business have a role in education? My short answer to that is, I have a small, high-technology company by the name of Parentronics Medical Systems located in Anarondo County, and that's one of the reasons I'm here. And as a result of that, I've had many opportunities to get to know folks at the University of Maryland, where there are a number of folks that have come from overseas to go to our graduate schools here, competing with the kids that grew up in Anarondo County and go to the University of Maryland. And when you get ready to go to college and graduate school, unfortunately, those folks that are coming here from India and Iran that I have hired beat out our kids from Anarondo County. And I can see that firsthand in my own company, and we need to work on it.
Okay, thank you.
Business and schools. One of the previous panel mentioned an experience in Indianapolis, I think it was, I could be mistaken, in which the local business are funding immersion classes in Chinese language. That is great. I think it's a great example to follow. I would be very scared if the business get involved to the level of having a say in the curricula and in the choices. Because business tends to look at the immediate, at most a few years down the road. They want someone who will come out of school and be productive immediately. But the economy, the economy of the country is driven mostly by innovation. No business would ever put much money into Facebook or into the internet for the matter. That came out of somebody inventing. And that's why I'm wary of allowing business to dictate what the children should be doing.
Okay, well, thank you very much, and I want to thank you for your desire to serve as well. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, that's all.
Thank you, Commissioner Burden. Commissioner Peters.
Thank you. Thank both of you for applying. Certainly appreciate your stepping forward and being, as I said, the good citizen. As you know, my questions are related to the role of the board and the specific behavior. Now, each of you responded in terms of what you said, you saw as the role, and the responsibility to work toward continuous measurable improvements in the achievement of schools. I think, Dr., that's what you had said, and then to lead, promote, and facilitate education, a board member should provide assistance and direction to the superintendent. But what does that mean in behavior-wise, in terms of, what is it that you would do as a board member to fulfill that role? Either one.
You want specifics.
If you wanna think about it, and Dr. Frank's wanna keep going.
I believe the role of a member on the Board of Education is to advise the superintendent. Or perhaps to put it in another context, I look at our school board somewhat like a very large corporation. Let's take General Electric, where the chief executive officer of that large corporation is analogous to Dr. Alato. And his responsibility is to direct the system, and that is, members of the board do not have that position. They have the opportunity to provide advice to him for the best way for him to run the school system. So I would hope I would be able to provide, from my own context, as a citizen, as a longtime resident of Anarondo County, and as a businessperson, to be able to give him some perspective on the best way for him to run a very, very large school system.
So how do you relate that to setting policy?
Perhaps one of the first things that is of concern to me is we have a very large number of folks that, as I mentioned before, they just don't graduate from high school. And I think unfortunately, sometimes the result of that is that we have a lot of children that come to school and they don't come from two-parent families. And that's a very difficult situation to deal with. And I think we need to do everything we can to try to provide the most assistance that we can to children that perhaps need a little more assistance, a little more motivation than folks that come from two-parent families.
Okay. How would you respond?
Okay, I think that as a board member, I would insist that we equal distribute, well, first of all, we advocate for as many resources as we can. It was in the papers these days that the government is going to cut the budget somehow. We need to, we will have to find a way to leave with less money that was available last year. And if the fiscal horizon remains dark, maybe accept the fact that we are not going to have as much money as we used to. So we need to budget, we need to make set priorities, and one of the priorities, I think, should be to equalize the schools. There is a large difference in elementary schools and secondary schools within the county. Some that, parts come from demographics, part comes from economics, part comes from some areas having children who are second, speaking English as a second language, are learning English as they go to school. We redistribute our resources without shortcoming the haves, but at the same time trying to bring up the have-nots as fast as we can. I don't know if I answered your question.
Okay, I'm not sure that I've gotten the understanding of your relationship as a board member, what you see as the, well, the relationship with each other as board members, and your relationship with the superintendent in terms of, you know, what that relationship would be.
As board members, we need to find a way to speak with one voice. As much as we can have different opinions on particular matters, we need to be able to present a cogent, well-taught, unified front to the politicians and to what ultimately is our employee, which is the supervisor. We need to be able to give him directions. Let him do the day-to-day run of the school and of the system. We're not going to micromanage, that's his job. But we must be able to look at what he does and ask questions.
Okay, thank you. Did you wanna add anything? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Peters, Commissioner Farrara.
How do you build, we thank you for applying for the position. We do value the fact that you are willing to serve, so thank you. How do you build consensus and give an example in how you were able to do this?
Profession is very easy. I have an equation, I have a computer model, I run it, and if someone who doesn't agree with me brings in his equation, his computer model, we put the same starting conditions, we see what comes out, and we compare to some ground truth. And whoever gets close to that wins the battle. When it comes to opinions, like what is going to be better? Is it, should we build a new high school, or should we refurbish two middle schools? That's not quite clear-cut. You bring to the table the data that you have, you bring to, you listen to whatever data everybody has, you talk about it, you consult with the constituencies, the other teachers, the other parents. When it comes to the high school, the students themselves become a constituency, they become stakeholders. And then you try to convince yourself or the others that one way forward is better than the other, and you keep talking about it until you get there.
I believe the question you ask is, how do you solve problems working with other people? Is that a concise?
Well, I, building consensus, all right, means you build toward a solution. It doesn't always have to be a problem, but it is building together. That's how I see consensus. It's not a vote.
Well, for me, in order to build consensus, you need to somehow develop some kind of personal relationship with other folks, so you understand their point of view, and perhaps they understand yours. And I think I could at least try to give a couple of examples that relate to current school board members. I've had an opportunity personally to get to know a couple of members of our school board. One of them has been around for some long time, Debbie Ritchie, before she was on the school board, what was involved as just a member of the community. And I had an opportunity by attending many school board meetings just to get to know her as an individual. And then I think Mr. Kevin Jackson will probably tell you, I have taken more time to get to know him by sitting down with him over some very, very, very long breakfasts. And I think I have a better understanding of his point of view, and he understands my point of view. And as a result of this, I think it's pretty easy to come to some consensus. Mr. Jones, I think you know we've known each other for a very long period of time, and I think we both have some understanding of our own backgrounds. And I hope as a result of personal relationships that it's pretty easy to build consensus.
Okay, as a school board member, parents will present their concerns about their child's school, about their teacher, the principal, and most recently, our snow days. But so how do you deal with this challenge? And what process?
Well, I can, I can tell you that with all of the most unfortunate press that Dr. Alato has gotten, I sympathized with him with regard to the subject of school days, and somewhat in an amusing way, I told him, I think it's probably the most difficult decision that a superintendent has to make. Because whatever decision you make, someone is gonna criticize you. And again, to try to add a sense of humor to some of this, I told him that perhaps he should get a degree in meteorology in order to solve that problem. But if you take a step back from that, that's really not the most difficult problem that we have.
So how do you, my question was, how do you react, or how do you respond to parents that call you with those type of concerns?
Well, I think the first thing that you need to do is to see if you can somehow develop some kind of personal understanding of what the parents' concerns are. And I have been to a number of school board meetings, and I have seen parents been pretty emotionally upset about what's going on with their student. And fortunately, they're And fortunately, there usually is some member of the staff that will take them aside and try to give them some firsthand understanding of what's going on. And I think maybe that's a result of sometimes what happens when you have a very, very large school system, that you don't always have this opportunity for parents to get involved and really have an understanding. And their first reaction is, well, I'm going to complain to the superintendent of schools, when in fact, the problem is usually solved at a much lower level. And many principals, if they knew about the problem, could probably solve it pretty easily.
First of all, you listen to the parent, what he has, he or she has to say. And then you have to ask yourself, is this one parent that's complaining out of 600 children? Or is it 200 parents that are complaining out of 600? If, obviously, it's different scale. If it is, if many parents are complaining about the same problem, there is something there. If one parent or two are complaining about completely unrelated problem by about the same person, maybe there is a misunderstanding going on, and you're trying to bring the both sides together and solve, find out what's happening. Have them talk to each other rather than come and ask some, they also have the smacking to come and solve it for them.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Farrar.
Thank you, both of you, for applying. Again, I'm amazed at your resumes and what you would bring to the table if you were appointed to the school board. My first question is, looking at the current composition of the school board, what sets you apart? Or in other words, why are you the ideal candidate?
Well, I presume knowing a lot about the current composition of the school board, which I know very little. I'm an unrealized citizen, I am a scientist, I speak English as a second language, and not all that well, probably. So those are differences. Whether they make me the ideal one, I don't know. That's for you to decide.
I'm certainly no ideal candidate. I'm sure a lot of folks could do an excellent job on the board. I can only mention a couple of things that I would, would hope would maybe make a difference in your understanding. There are a whole bunch of folks that have applied from Crofton, and I happen to be one of those folks that have applied. And there is a group in Crofton called the Greater Crofton Council, and I belong to that organization and have been the education member of that committee. And I was pleased to know that they, as a group, have endorsed me of all the folks in Crofton, so that means something to me. I hope it means something to you. What, I'm sorry, I'm not sure I heard the rest of your question, I apologize.
I was just rephrasing it, that I was saying what sets you apart and what would you bring to the board? In other words, and if this helps you, both of you, you know, what quality do you think that you can bring to the board? I was trying to say what sets you apart, if you were aware of what the other members of the current school board look like and what they bring to the table. It was what do you bring to the table that would?
Well, I would tell you that as a result of being able to start and grow a small, high-technology company in Anaronda County, that's something that's very important to me. And I know that we're trying to build technology as part of our school system. I certainly would do whatever I could to endorse that and help with that. But, you know, on the other hand, I really have to take a step back here and realize that I would, I would hope that, you know, having a perspective of a businessman, one of the things that I know that I would have the opportunity and the responsibility to look at is our school board budget. But I have to tell you, with my small, high-technology company, I have someone that is a CPA that helps me with my own budget. So I would want to reach out to other members of the community to help me better understand a school budget that is not a billion dollars, but it's a thousand-million-dollar budget. And that's going to be very difficult, I think, for anyone to grapple, and I'll do my best to do that with my business experience.
And I have one other question. We've obviously made a lot of strides in technological advancement and with communication, yet I believe there's many parents who still aren't aware of all the issues facing the school board and what is going on. I would maybe call it a communication gap. Yes, every parent receives information when a school is closed or when there's delays, but they don't always understand or know what's going on at the school board. How do you think you can help try to close that communication gap?
Well, I certainly agree with you that unfortunately, there is a communications gap. And sometimes I see that communication gap really emphasized when we decide that we're going to redistrict schools. And the reason I mention that is that's the only time that this school board is full of parents. They're either in favor of it or violently opposed to it, but for all other issues, there doesn't seem to be the right mechanism to reach out to the community. I used to have the opportunity to be in charge of the student-parent group, and that was a group of citizens' parents, whether or not they had children in the school system, had an opportunity to come and elect an individual that would take their voices in front of the school board. And for a variety of reasons, it was determined by a previous superintendent of schools to do away with that and select members of the community to be advisors to the board. I would very much like to have an opportunity to have all parents be a part of an advisory group without being vetted by the school system.
Has there ever been a try to decentralize the board? We have 12 high schools. If we hold our meetings once, once a month in each school, January will be in Annapolis, February will be in, I don't know, you name it. Make it easier for the parents to attend. That would be my, something I would like to try.
Thank you very much.
Could I add one point to that? That's a wonderful suggestion, and at one time, the school board actually took that up, and I don't think it went very far, but for a short period of time, meetings were held around the county. Maybe we should bring that back.
Thank you. Commissioner Jones.
Thank you. Well, welcome, and like my colleagues up here at the, I'm not exactly sure what they call it, the dice, the desk, the counter, we appreciate your stepping forward and working for the community. I have one question, it's a quick one, and another question is probably going to take me longer to ask than it is going to take you to answer. First question, quick one. We've, you've heard us talk about Common Core and the Park Assessment over the course of this evening, of this evening's questions. Would you be in favor or opposed to paying teachers by their students' scores on the Park Assessment? Dr. Frank, I'm going to ask you to answer first because pay for performance for teachers was the topic of our trip to Chicago that you mentioned.
It absolutely was. And I can remember a considerable split in the opinions. On the one hand, and then on the other hand, as Milton Friedman, a great economist, used to say, conceptually, it sounds like a great idea. After all, people in business are paid for performance, so why don't we pay teachers for performance? Well, the problem with that is, we have children that come from all different backgrounds, and some of them need an extraordinary amount of help. Some of them come to school and don't have any particular background from their parents or an understanding that the most important thing for parents is to have their children well-educated. So it's, it, it, it sounds like a great idea, though let's put pressure, let's compensate or not compensate teachers, but perhaps we ought to put more pressure on the parents before we do that on the teachers.
Thank you. Mr. DiAmici, is that how I pronounce it?
DiAmici, that is correct. Yes. Yes, if we can agree on how to measure performance. Because if you just measure performance based on what a number is, the average score for the classroom, you're not, you're only taking one small piece of the puzzle and you're trying to solve it only on that one. It's more difficult at the elementary level, elementary school level, because the teacher sees one classroom essentially. Those are the 25 or 28 children that he has to work. It's much easier to do at the high school level, where a math teacher will have three, four, or five, six different classrooms. So you can average out based on what is the overall performance of those classrooms and weight the scores that way. And also, you can add, put some weight based on the schools, on the, on the whole school. If they all, the entire high school is doing badly overall, you can't penalize the teachers that are there.
Right.
Now, if one classroom is doing badly, then yes, probably it's worth taking a closer look.
All right, thank you. The second question, the one that's going to require the explanation before you answer. Although, Dr. Frank, you're probably familiar with some of it. Maryland has a state law that requires local jurisdictions, in our case, the county executive and county council, to allocate money to the local school system at no lesser per pupil dollar amount than it did the prior year. The law is called Maintenance of Effort. Anaronda County Public Schools over the past six years has been being choked because we've been getting no more than the Maintenance of Effort required, the minimum lawful allocation since 2009. We've gotten the same $7,712 per student for the last six years, and we might be looking at a seventh. All that is intended to pay for is the increases in population, in student population. And over recent years, it's had to be used for some things else that are not discretionary. It's had to be used for the qualitative improvements that you've heard talked about, the increase in the STEM programs, the Magna programs, foreign language programs, English language learner programs. Maintenance of Effort covers none of that. So since Maintenance of Effort money had to be used to cover other nondiscretionary obligations, class sizes have continued to grow. Looking at the possibility of yet a seventh year of a $7,712 per student allocation, and maybe for the foreseeable future, is there anything you could think, you think you can do as a board member to get the county funding authorities to allocate more than the minimum lawful allocation?
Tough question for several reasons. And you certainly know this issue perhaps better than anyone else, but my understanding of Maintenance of Effort has to do with we're going to allocate a certain number of dollars based on the number of students. All issue, all other issues aside, and that's a determination that has been made by the state on our county. So it seems as if, at one time, this may have been a wonderful idea, but there doesn't seem to be any opportunity to work within the law to look at how students are doing in particular areas relative to the number of dollars that are allocated. So it seems to me at some point, I would hope that our state legislature would be willing and able to revisit this issue because it seems as if they're really, again, with my limited understanding of this, there just are not a lot of options that are available to our school board.
But no, there are not a lot of options available to the school board. The options, the flaw, and the ointment, the fly-in ointment is on the county government's side. The county funding authorities are free and clear to allocate more than the MOE requirement, but they're not allowed to go under it. And that's been the problem. Mr. DiAmici?
Well, you start lobbying the politicians to change the law. At the very least, to change so that the amount of money that is allocated per pupil is in decise to the cost of living, to the increase in population and the increase in tax revenues, so that the schools do share into the good times. California passed a constitutional amendment a few years ago, which does something very similar, puts a floor under what the schools can, how the schools can be funded. And unless there is a recession, it cannot go down, but has to go up based on inflation. That would be a start. Unfortunately, the constitutional amendment allowed is not achieving Maryland as it is in California. I was used to have about 15 different ballot proposition a year for changing the constitution. Those were too many. Lobby the legislators on this. Communicate with the parents. They are the stakeholders.
Thank you, thank you, Commissioner Jones. Commissioner Davenport.
The first question goes to Mr. Frank. Throughout your application, Mr. Frank, you talked about community involvement and parental involvement, how you're going to get them engaged. Do you have a plan in mind of how you're going to go about doing this as a board member? How are you going to get the parents in the community engaged in school activities?
I don't know whether I have a plan, but I've certainly thought about it a lot, and I can relate back to a number of high school principals that have been able to get parents involved in their particular school. And I think if we work at elementary schools, middle schools, and high schools, there's a much higher likelihood that parents are going to want to get involved. And in addition to wanting to get involved, there's going to be a serious interest in getting them involved in their school so that their school and their, their kids do well in that school. And so I would start at the school level. There is a significant number of parents that get involved in elementary schools. And as we get higher up and ultimately get to high school, the number of parents that get involved is significantly less. So I would like to build on the elementary school level and see if the principals can help get folks involved and then ultimately get those folks to come to school board meetings.
Okay. Mr. Giovanni, some question. How are you planning to get How are you planning to get the parents and the community involved with the school as a board member?
One way could be to bring the board member closer to the parents and the community by holding decentralized meetings, so that we are on their doorsteps. If they have anything to, to say about the schools, this is the time to do it. Make it easier. Offer more venues of the...
Okay, both, the questions for both of you. You know, one of the serious issue in Annapolis County Public School is the achievement gap. What plan do you have in working as a board member to make sure that the achievement gap is closed, or working on getting it closed?
Give an incentive to teachers, to good teachers, to go and work in bad schools.
Okay.
Take away that, this is, well, it's going to be difficult, but a teacher with seniority is a, is a good teacher usually. And because of his seniority, he can, he can choose his assignment. Make it so that there is an advantage for his career if he takes a difficult assignment in an inner-city school. Distribute resources so that in a school, we have a large percentage of children who are getting subsidized meals. Schools with a large, large number of children who don't speak English. Schools with, with a large number of children who come from broken families can offer after-school If a kid goes home at the end of the school and is sitting in front of the TV, being a passive recipient of the latest commercial, it's not going to work very well. Keep the, keep the kid engaged. I don't know if it is doable, but offering subsidized after-school programs, not with just caretakers, but with someone who's helping them doing the homework, is going to work, should help.
Okay, thank you.
In essence, your question is, what are we going to do to solve the achievement gap? Unfortunately, not only has the problem existed for a very long time, but there have been folks that have been apparently committed to try to resolve the problem, and I'm not sure that, you know, we've really seen anything that has really effectively done anything with it. For me, the, the answer is to do everything we can to see if we can get parents of children, and sometimes some children don't have two parents, to understand and realize the value of an education. I guess I was lucky that when I went to, before I even went to high school, my parents told me that I was going to go to college. And I, I think sometimes that if you raise the bar and, and you explain to kids sometimes that don't have two parents, that we're expecting you, after you finish high school, that you're going to go to the community college, or you're going to go to the University of Maryland. I don't have the answer to that, but I, I think a lot can be done with leadership from the superintendent, members of the school board, and members of the community, that we need to have a much higher percentage of kids graduating from high school. And some of our high schools right now don't have a very large percentage of kids that, that are graduating, and, and I would say that's the number-one thing that we need to work on.
Thank you. Commissioner Bukowski.
Thank you. And thank you both for stepping forward and your willingness to serve. Dr. Frank, I think you pretty much answered the question about the level of involvement, the time commitment in your application, as far as what you would need to do and how you would anticipate your involvement with the board. Dr. D'Amici, within your job, do you have flexibility to be able to spend the possible 20 to 40 hours a week as a member of the board?
The flexibility, yes. Working for the federal government, and working for NASA, and doing mostly data analysis is something that I can do from home, on the laptop, and telecommute. The time is the 40 hours that, essentially, another full-time job, which might require some adjustment. I think I will be able to, yes.
Okay. Thank you. Then, moving into a completely different area. We have several schools within the county that are designated either Title I or AAA schools because of the high percentage of students receiving free or reduced meals. In the Annapolis Cluster, we have schools like Tyler Heights, Mills, Walter S. Mills Perle, Georgetown East, Eastport, that are Title I schools. However, in the Annapolis Cluster, what we also have is the Annapolis Education Commission, which is part of the city of Annapolis, part of the governance. And people that attend those meetings and people who participate as those commissioners are very staunch advocates for the Annapolis Cluster schools. So, you know, you probably have seen at board meetings where someone may come and introduce himself as being part of that commission. In addition, we have the availability of many mentors, mentors from the Naval Academy. There are several groups that are comprised of people who are retired, or people who just have made a commitment to be able to, to do this, and they are trying to mentor students throughout our cluster as well. By the same token, I look at schools, say, in the North County Cluster, school, elementary schools like Park, Belgrove, North Glen, Hilltop, also Title I schools. But the same kind of, of business partnerships don't exist there, and I know that the principals, you know, are, are trying very, very hard to forge relationships, but those, those opportunities aren't up there like they are down here. In the Annapolis Cluster, there are many people who have connections, who, those, particularly those who are retired, or those who have flexibility, such as you do, and have, you know, can bring in a lot of the corporate partnerships. Not so much up there. So as a board member, how would you begin to kind of solve that inequity?
I'm going to turn this around a little bit. Remind me, if you could, the fellow that's a professor at the Naval Academy who started this group with the Annapolis school system.
Well, he didn't start the group, but he was the chair of the group, Jeff McCree's.
Yeah. One of the things that Jeff McCree did, first of all, he has a, he had a significant number of children in our school system, and he stepped forward. And as I recall, he started that group.
Well, the group is actually a committee that started in 2005. I was on the committee at that point. He came on later, but...
I, I guess my point is that he, and you, and a few other folks in the Annapolis Cluster, stepped forward to form that group. And I, I think we need to figure out a way to find similar parents, taxpayers, in other parts of the county. And as you say, you know, Glen Burnie would be another great area to start one of these. But I think we need to figure out a way to get some folks to volunteer to, to help do that, that are a part of that community. I happen to be from Crofton, where fortunately, we have a lot of good schools, good parents, good students. But I, I think there's an opportunity there in, in different parts of the county to see if we could get more parents involved and ask them to start something in their community as, as already been started in Annapolis.
Okay. Dr. D'Amici?
As a board, I don't know how much you can do to convince parents to step forward. You can encouragement, you can show them, you can suggest it, but if they're, they're not willing, they're not, they're not going, not going to do it. So you have to go to the next best thing, which is a policy. Can you help these Title I schools to get better, to give them the opportunities and the tools that the school in Annapolis have through the involvement of their parents, without alding Peter to pay Paul? Because you can't take money out of the Annapolis schools just because they're lucky or good enough to have parent involvement. I don't think I have a solution. Something that needs to be debated very carefully. Because on one side, you, obviously, you don't want to have different tracks within the same district. I mean, if, just because those schools are happy to be in Annapolis, where you have a certain type of community, why should the other children be disadvantaged?
Okay. Thank you. And then the final question is, as a board member lobbying for the budget that you all have just, well, have been just created, what are some suggestions you would make to the county executive and the county council about the source of funding to meet all the needs perceived by the Board of Ed?
I, I think my first comment is that we need to have a superintendent of schools and a county executive that are willing to work together, and I think we have that right now. And I think, as I look back with previous superintendents of schools and county executives, they were loggerheads, and they did not want to come to an understanding and an agreement with that. And certainly, school board members can help with that by getting involved with members of the county council. And interestingly, I'm sure you may or may not know, we now have two members of the county council that used to be on the school board. So, I think that could be a great advocate for us, and give us an opportunity to get to work with folks, and again, have a personal working relationship with those folks. And I understand that our county executive and his brother are longtime residents of Crofton, so maybe that will be another reason to get them involved with our school system.
Okay, Dr. D'Amici?
If I understood your question right, you're asking, how are we going to get more money out of the system?
Well, how are you going to be part of the solution?
I think it was your original question, to involve business. And that definitely could be a solution, to get a partnership in which business can provide funding for certain targeted activities, therefore freeing some of that money for more general purposes.
Okay, thank you.
That's short of raising taxes.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Bukowski. All right, so we've, we've come to the end, and my fellow commissioners don't want me to ask any questions. Thank you. So, at least the vice, the vice chair just wants me to ask one question. So I'm just going to keep it brief, because your, your answers, heretofore, have been good ones. And of course, when two PhDs and lawyer gets together, I don't know what, what, what might happen. But I, I'm going to limit my questions, really, one question, it can be broken down, but it's essentially picking up on a couple of themes. You're both applying for the District 33 position. Clearly, you're both from Crofton. I've known Dr. Frank for, for many years. District 33 is, is unique in, in many ways in, in the county. It has extraordinarily high-performing schools. It has pockets that need improvement. And of course, the big to-do, at least certainly in my 23 years living in Crofton, and being active in District 33 as a Crofton high school. But, Mr. D'Amici, let's, let's start with you. You have conceded the point and have been very candid with some of your answers, but also that you are relatively new to the area. Now, having said that, with District 33 and its differences, and its various different schools, and communities, to be, to be fair, I, I'd like to get your impression, therefore, on coming to the board and representing District 33. Do you feel you have an appreciation for District 33, and especially some of its more rural and Davidsonville area, and South County, amongst other areas, versus Severna Park feeder, the Crofton feeders? And just want to get your impression on what you think about the differences, and if you were appointed to the board, what would be your priorities for District 33?
The last question is the easy one, the high school.
And the absence of a high school being built, what would you do? Would you keep the split between Arundel and South River, or would you unify Crofton in some way to one high school?
I think, my understanding is that both Arundel and South River are at or near capacity. So I don't see how you can, without shifting many other students, unify Crofton in one high school. So I don't, I don't think that that is a viable solution without raising a lot of complaint from other parents.
Potentially, potentially, true. And picking up on one other thing, I want to stay with you, Dr. D'Amici, with a couple of commissioners related to the, the budget, the money, the fiscal management. So have you had the opportunity to examine or look at the prior two years fiscal operating and capital budgets the Board of Education has approved?
I have not.
You have not? Okay. So I won't ask a follow-up question to that. Dr. Frank, is it by recollection that you have applied to serve on the Board of Education before and have had your name forwarded to the governor before?
Yes, my name was forwarded. There were two names that went forward, and Ms. Patty Nally beat me out, and I did not get the nod of the governor. He could only pick one individual, and I did not make that selection at that time.
And in your estimation, does, did Ms. Nally serve admirably on the board?
I've known her for a very long period of time. She, she has a perspective that a lot of other folks don't have. She was a principal in one of our schools, so I think she brought some perspective that I would not have brought.
So you don't feel too bad that you were beat out by her?
We're good friends.
Okay. That's good. So I, I want to just touch on one, one thing with you, Dr. Frank, about, and, and we've heard this from other candidates, and I had asked other candidates a similar question about STEM programs, the demand within the county. If you could just juxtapose that to what has come out in your application, and I think also in some of your questions about the high school graduation... also in some of your questions about the high school graduation rate and your concern about students, not enough students graduating from high school. Seems to be a, seems to be a little counterintuitive. We have this demand for STEM, and then at the same time, we have this perceived, I guess in your estimation, because you talk about it a lot, a higher dropout rate, or maybe not dropping out, but just not graduating. Is there a disconnect that I'm, I mean, not seeing? Or are you saying, or you seem to be suggesting that Annapolis County has a more acute problem with graduation rates than we otherwise knew?
We have a broad range of student capabilities, and again, I'm going to go back to parents and a mom and a dad at home. There's a, there's a large group of kids, I think, on both ends of the spectrum. And the fact that we have some schools that are extraordinary schools for extraordinary students, that's, that's the case, that's how it is. And unfortunately, at the other end, we also have a significant number of kids that don't get a 2.0 grade point average and don't graduate from high school. And I suspect that that's the case in many other parts of the state of Maryland. In fact, as I recall, when Dr. Maxwell decided to go to Prince George's County, that situation is even worse in that county. After all, there's, we have some extraordinary schools in that county, and we have a large, significant number of kids that don't graduate from high school there. So, you know, this certainly is not just the situation in Annapolis County. I think it's, you know, that's unfortunately where we are and something we need to work on.
Okay, thank you. Fair enough. So I'm going to conclude there because your answer's been great and answers to other commissioners' questions. As we've said with all of the candidates that have come before us this evening, and we will say in the ensuing hearings, if there was a particular question that you'd like to elaborate on or that you didn't necessarily have the time to address the way that you wanted, please feel free to follow up with us via email or dropping the answer here at the Board of Education, and they will take it into consideration. So I want to thank this panel, our last panel, hanging in there until the wee hours. We very much appreciate that and your participation this evening. So with that, we're going to conclude our hearing for this evening. Administratively, we will be back here at 7:00 PM Thursday evening for our second hearing. Please look out, commissioners also, just for an update. We've heard throughout today's hearing about some candidates withdrawing. That may happen, I don't know, tomorrow or before the next hearing. But what that will allow us to do is potentially change up some of the order for the panel on Thursday, and I'll be in touch with those candidates. So with that, we stand adjourned, and I'd like to thank members of the public for participating this evening and hanging in there, maybe in their homes on HD watching us, I don't know. But we'll be back on Thursday. Thank you. We stand adjourned.